Welcome to the special meeting of the City Commission. This is regarding the Charter Officer Evaluation Process. There came a point in our previous meetings that we really didn't have a format or an outline in which to evaluate our Charter Officers. And I think the conversation was triggered when we were asked to evaluate the City Manager. So now we have an opportunity here using the ICMA template to make a decision as to whether or not we want to use this going forward. And Greg, did you want to start out with any kind of comments before we open it up to the Commission?
Sure. So we took back the guidelines that were provided to us by the Commission. And Jerome Post, HR Director for the City, facilitated a session with all Charter Officers. We chimed in on a process together. And Jerome is ready to speak on what that process will look like. We'd love to get your feedback. And if this is the process that the Commission would like for us to follow, we'd be glad to follow that.
Okay, Jerome.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. As the City Manager said, we had a meeting with the Charter Officers. We put together the proposed process as it has been described in the Agenda Memo. And there are several points to it. One of the goals that we had for this was, of course, to establish a structured process, which we put together, and then provide a standard format, which really has yet to be determined. What is provided in your Agenda Packet is an example that I think you've seen before from the ICMA. And that's particular to the City Manager's position. We have asked the other Charter Officers to provide a tailored format, pretty much the same as City Managers, but tailored to their specific office that they can provide for you as well for your review. And then those items on those forms can serve also, not just for the eventual evaluation piece, but also for the goals and objectives for the coming year. So we can get those submitted to you, preferably within the next 30 days. We do have several of the officers already submitted their format. So as soon as I have them all together, I can forward them to you for your review. And then we can move forward with the coming year and the eventual evaluations. We do want to get your input on this. The Charter Officers and I came up with this process. But if there are edits or changes, or if you would like to see a different process altogether, let me know.
Okay, so before we get to that, let me just ask you a question. So it's, once we come up with a format, then each Commissioner would be tasked with meeting with each Charter Officer as their review comes up? And then they would fill this out? And it would be submitted to you? Is that how we're sort of looking at it?
Well, let me clarify. The process does not require the Commissioners to complete the form. They may opt to not use one at all. Because there are some that would prefer not to, and we didn't want to tie anybody's hands to that effect. But you are correct in that within 60 days prior to the upcoming anniversary date, the Commissioners would be notified. And you would be given the opportunity to meet individually with the Charter Officer to review their performance, either using the standard form provided or not at all.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, so why don't we start with the Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor, do you have any comments or questions that you'd like to ask at this time?
I do have a question. This process, I thought we were going in a direction where this would be implemented and used by each Commissioner, not as a choice to opt in or out to use the...
I thought we were to.
Use that format. So with the discussion, when did the direction change to have an option?
Well, it's up to us to decide now what we want to do.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we decide today what we want to do.
Okay, because I believe that, one, transparency, and then also for it to be uniformed across the board when we make our evaluations with our Charter Officers. So it would be, in a sense, a consistent method of what we're using, okay? So with that statement, I want to place that out there. And then I do have a question in regards to the Officers providing their metrics of how we would evaluate them. Is that something that beforehand we'll be able to review and before it's implemented? Or is it just given and that's the choice?
Well, that is up to the Commission. We can do it either way. And my thought was that we could provide the template as provided by the Charter Officers. If there are edits or suggestions, I would assume the Commission would take the opportunity to make those changes and return them to the Charter Officer for their eventual evaluation.
Okay. And an additional question, staying on my point of having that consistency and transparency across the board. How would it... How would it...
Take your time, take your time.
That's a little volume there, okay. In regards to the reviews, I see here there's a 60-day window where we would have an appointment with the Charter Officer in order to do the review. Once the review is completed, again, who would receive that document that we have completed and turned in for review?
Well, for the sake of Sunshine Laws, as I understand it from the City Attorney, those forms should not be shared, or the comments on them should not be shared until the regular meeting at which the Commission is able to provide the full review for the Charter Officer. Because it is a public document, it would then be turned over to Human Resources, myself, for submission into the personnel file.
All right, but to Vice Mayor's point, so let's see how this would work. So let's say we all are assigned the responsibility of filling this out. I don't know if we can force it upon a Commissioner, but let's say we come up with a format where we all decide this is what we're going to fill out for each Charter Officer. So a certain Officer comes up for review. We take this home, we fill it out, we bring it to the next Commission meeting. It's at that point, it becomes a public document, and we submit it to you to collate all the results? Is that kind of how we're looking at it? And then you come back with the summary of it? And then we can make our decision regarding the review from that point? Is that what we're talking about here today?
That was not originally what we were talking about, but we can certainly use that process. I have used that process with other agencies that I've worked with, and it worked fine.
Is that what you were thinking, Vice Mayor?
Yes, the point of the evaluation is to come to an understanding of the review, what overall, as a Commission, how we're reviewing the Officers. It's not just to say we filled out a form and, okay, nothing is addressed or nothing is...
So I think maybe, does anyone else have an opinion on this, Commissioner Herbst?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have several thoughts about this. First of all, I've already used the forms. I found them a good format, a good structure. I use them in meeting with the City Manager and with the City Auditor. I think they're a good start. I do think as time goes on, we can tweak these a little bit. Again, starting point is better than no point at all, right? So other thoughts about that is, I think we could adopt this as a policy, which would encourage its use by all the Commissioners. I don't know that I necessarily want to embed this in our ordinance code and make it mandatory. I think we should all have a little bit of flexibility in how we do our jobs and how we evaluate the people that report to us. But I do think it's very important for all the Charter Officers to understand what our expectations are of them. And this gives us that framework of commonality of issues and criteria that they would be expected to have mastered during the course of the year to do their job. The only things that I want to bring into the conversation is that this should not be a hard and fast. Again, this is a framework for discussion between, I'll use the City Manager as an example, the City Manager and the individual Commissioners. I may weight some of these criteria differently than some of the other Commissioners do. There are certain things that I think are more important. So when we do an RFP, for example, we say we're going to weight qualifications 20%, price 30%. We have all the criteria in there, but we weight it differently in every single RFP that we put out. So I don't want to necessarily take these scores and then hand them to HR and come up with a final number and say, this is the rating for the City Manager. Because I may use this criteria, but again, based on my subjective weighting of the things that I think are more important in the City Manager's performance, may have an overall conclusion of higher or lower than what the score would otherwise indicate. So again, I think this is a framework for discussion. I think at the end of the day, each of the City Commissioners will then have the opportunity to say, you know, where they feel that that respective Charter Officer has performed, whether it's satisfactory, above satisfactory, or below satisfactory, and the merit raised that they think is appropriate for that level of performance. So again, I just don't, I like the criteria because I think it's a sound basis for the conversation with each of the Charter Officers. It gives them an expectation of the things that they need to be working on during the course of the year. But I think when it comes to how we come to our overall evaluation, I don't necessarily want to be bound to a tool. A tool is a mechanism for a discussion, not an arbiter of what the final score is going to be. It's not a test.
Okay, so, and I get what you're saying, but at the same time, once we fill these things out, using this as a chart or a format, what would be the, from your point of view, what would be the next step? We bring it to the Commission, Commissioners all, you know, they brought their report filled out to a Commission meeting. What would be the next step in terms of the evaluation process?
So I think what I would foresee is, we all have filled out our forms, and then at the end of that, I think there should be a summary. And again, I look at it on a 1-2-3 scale, you know, where, you know, say, 2 is, performs adequately, 1 is underperformed, 3 is overperformed, and base it on that. So I think there needs to be a summary. What I think is that the form, again, provides a thought process for how you come to that conclusion.
I understand that, but, so what would be, so, all right, so, let's say we're doing something for the City Attorney, okay? So we bring back our performance rating as we see it. We're at a meeting, we'll say it's a conference meeting. Do we exchange paperwork? Or do we give it to Jerome to perhaps start the process by creating a summary? And then we have a conversation at a following meeting to review what each other has said? And then we can explain why we weight one criteria greater than another? I'm just trying to understand the dynamic that we're contemplating.
Sure, no, I think the procurement process provides a very good example of how this works. So when we have a selection committee, they go through a whole assortment of criteria, and then they come up with a recommendation.
Right.
Right? So they rank them 1, 2, and 3.
Right.
Unless you want to know what all the evaluation criteria and scores and notes were, you can dig down, in fact, I've done that on many occasions, where I've actually asked for the notes that substantiate the scores that the selection committee comes up with. So it's there if you want to go look at it, but it's not necessary for us as policymakers to make a decision on. It's merely background information. So I would suggest that we come up, again, and I like to keep it simple, 1, 2, 3, you know, 1 below, 2 average, 3 above average.
But you still recommend our filling it out, filling out this document? And what do we do after we fill this out?
I think it's just there as supporting information. I don't think it need, I don't, so I will also give you my overall philosophy of how I evaluate staff. I've had my evaluation with the two Charter Officers. I am going to give you an overall conclusion, and I'm not going to get into the details in a public forum as to where I think they have overperformed or underperformed. I like to keep those conversations between myself and the respective Charter Officers. I don't believe, having gone through this process myself for many years, that the public whipping that we have done on occasion is neither productive nor useful for morale building or encouraging changes in behavior. So I like to do that in private, and I am prepared to come forward with an overall recommendation. That's how I like to do it. I think that is a more useful process. But obviously, everybody has their own way. If they want to go through every single criteria in the workshop, they're more than welcome to do that. I won't be doing that.
Okay, all right. So you see this almost like as a worksheet for yourself, for your own purposes, and then you come up, and then you would deliver your own conclusions, okay?
It's that, and also, in addition to that, which I think is of equal importance, though, it also lets the Charter Officer know what expectations we have for them at the beginning of the year. So when we have this conversation, and as I've told them both, I plan on having multiple conversations along the same criteria during the year, not just once. I've always found it very counterproductive to have a single evaluation at the end of the year. There are study after study that will tell you that performance evaluations are, you know, one of the worst things you can do as an employer. People have a tendency to only remember what's happened in the last two months. And so I've worked, when I was up in the city of Jacksonville, on developing a whole new performance evaluation criteria. And it involved constant monitoring and scoring and quarterly reviews with the employees involved. Our HR department developed it up there, and I thought it was a significant improvement of what I've seen in most places. So I want to implement something similar. I'm going to meet with them, using the same criteria on a frequent basis, so that nobody is surprised when we get to the end of the year and we have that wrap-up. They already know where they stand with me.
Okay, Commissioner Glassman, what are your thoughts on this process?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to concur with Commissioner Herbst on mostly everything that he has said. I will not be filling out a form, and I will not be signing a form for records. I have been involved in doing evaluations just about in every career I've ever had. And I think that when I look at a lot of the information that's been provided to us, first of all, the forms are 11 years old. I'd like to know if there's even something more current than 11 years old. I'd like to know what other municipalities do, not just in Broward County, but are there templates?
I think this is from the ICMA.
Correct.
Right, so it's not just Broward County.
Right, but I mean, I'd like to know what other municipalities do in terms of performance review of their Charter Officers in Broward County specifically.
Oh, in Broward, oh, I see what you're saying.
I'd like to see what some of our neighboring cities do.
Okay.
I think that if someone needs this as a framework, as Commissioner Herbst said, that's great. I would encourage my colleagues to use as many tools as possible as a framework in evaluating the Charter Officers. But I do not think that we should be mandating anything that a Commissioner has to do in terms of evaluating the Charter Officers. I think that's an individual process, an individual decision. And as has already been stated before, many of us put different weights on different criteria. The transparency part comes when we actually have that meeting, and we do that performance review of the Charter Officers. That's all public record, the videos are there, all of our statements are heard by everyone. But again, I'm just not in favor of coming up with a standard form and saying, okay, everyone has to use this, and then you need to sign this, and then you need to submit this.
Okay. Commissioner Sturman, what are your thoughts?
I have a few thoughts. I'm going to start by agreeing with my other colleagues up here, which is always a nice thing, when we agree on something. I think that it should be a policy, not an ordinance, something that is a little bit flexible. But two things, one thing that nobody touched upon, the way this is said is 60 days prior to the evaluation, that the Charter Officer will submit a matrix upon which he is going to be reviewed. I think it's a little bit backwards. I think 60 days prior to the review, he submits his, what he thinks is the matrix, and we decide what the matrix is going to be. For instance, each officer might be something different. It might be communication, it might be timeline, it's budget, whatever it is. I think we should set the matrix at that meeting 60 days ahead of time. I think that that form should go out to us to use at our discretion. And number two is, I agree with my colleagues, I don't think it should be submitted, I don't think it should be given to HR. I think we should use it and bring it with us at the meeting. And we could go off of that when we have our discussion, use that matrix as a guide for our discussion. And if we want to go ahead and rank 1, 2, 3, like John Herbst said, which I think is useful, we could go through here and you could go item by item and rank them and then come to a conclusion. But I don't think something needs to be submitted. But the big thing is, I think we should set the matrix at the meeting ahead of time.
Well, I think that the, I think what's being suggested is that we will be alerted as to when the review is going to be requested of us 60 days prior to that date. So then we can begin the processes of doing the evaluation ahead of time. So I think that's all that's being meant here, correct?
That is correct. Don't forget that one of the key elements of this was the individual meeting with the Charter Officer. That gives you the opportunity within that 60 days to be able to meet with that person and go over whatever's on the, either on the form or whatever else you'd like to have a conversation about in terms of that person's performance over the past year.
And Mayor, I would also hope that anyone feels it's quite simple to make an appointment with a Charter Officer. It doesn't have to be just for that appointment. It could be all throughout the year. I mean, I would hope that all of us meet with the Charter Officers, give feedback consistently. It doesn't have to wait just for that one meeting. I know that if I have a question or if I want to hear something, I'll reach out to any one of the Charter Officers and have that conversation. You know, there's also a component in the backup that I thought was really good that we haven't talked about, but I like the paragraph about self-evaluation. I think that that's something that's interesting to hear, how each of the Officers actually would conduct a self-evaluation, which I think might be just useful as well. But again, it's up to us to meet with the Charter Officers whenever we feel the need to have a discussion, that's all. Thanks.
All right, well, what triggered all this was when Greg's review was coming up, and there was a concern that there was no, like, real objective criteria against which to base performance. So it was... So, so it was, uh, so we asked for the format that was used for the ICMA, and this is what's been given to us now, and, uh, and, and so I get from what people are saying is, we could either accept it or reject it, we could use it as, as a, like a checklist for our own edification, but in the end, when we do have a meeting, we're going to draw from our own experiences and our own, and our own points of view, and then we will, we're not necessarily married to what we, we might put on this, um, on this form. It's not going to be submitted as, as a public record, it's just going to be a worksheet for each individual commission, commissioner to use. So that's kind of what I'm hearing. So, so that will be the, that's going to be the methodology going forward then, uh, as we start to discuss, uh, reviews of future, of future charter officers. Now, pending is still the city manager's charter, uh, um, review, so.
And the city auditor, we deferred as well.
And the city auditor, right.
And I don't really even know why we have deferred those reviews, I was not in favor of deferring those reviews.
Well, we did, so.
But we did, but I don't know why, but, so when are those going to be scheduled?
So we need, so, so, um, does everyone feel, so, we need to give the members of the commission the opportunity, if they so choose, to be able to meet with each, each of those charter officers to satisfy their, their, their expectations as to what they, what they would like to see in these, in particular individuals. So, um, a lot of time has gone past, I would, I would like to think that we should, could be able to wrap those up by the next commission meeting. Does, is that feasible for, for this commission? Do you have any, Vice Mayor?
Um, that is feasible for me. I have had, um, review, um, interviews with both the city manager and the auditor.
Okay.
Um, so, um, with the format and the way we can move forward, I'm, I'm, I don't have a delay, is what I'm saying, I've had those interviews. So if we want to move forward to the next.
Next commission meeting?
The next commission, uh, commission meeting, next available art, opportunity, I, I am in favor of that.
You're good, is, is that everyone pretty much okay with that?
No.
No, you're not. How much more time do you need?
Well, here's, um, first of all, it's Thanksgiving, I'm going to be away, I'm not going to have a chance to meet with them beforehand, but I do want to have one more, one more conference where we go through, they, if you look through the process, I want them to go submit what the matrix is going to be, what we're going to, as a consensus, things that are important to us, and we might or might not use that.
Well, that's what this, that's what this meeting is for.
Well, this is, this meeting is just the process, we haven't gotten the, the, the two charter officers have not submitted to us, uh, what they think the matrix is, how we're going to.
Well, they're not going to tell us what to do.
Well, this is what this says here, and I don't want us to do that, I want us to do that, I want us to, to go forward and, like, they might say, if you look at this right here, it says at least 60 days prior, uh, the evaluation, the officer will provide the respective matrix. That's what this says, and I think that we should.
But, but Warren, this is just, excuse me, there's a misunderstanding here. We were asked to find out what it is that the ICMA uses as a, as a protocol and as a worksheet, as they try to evaluate certain charter officers. That's all that's submitted here.
Right, right.
Right now, we have the opportunity to massage those, those requirements. And, and so, to do, have another meeting to do exactly what we're supposed to be doing now, what is it that you'd like to change now? This is the opportunity to do that.
What I would like to do is, uh, is the next meeting.
I'm not saying we're going to have a next meeting, this is the meeting.
No, no, no.
This is the meeting.
Okay, so when is our, Greg, when's our next meeting?
December 5.
Okay, on December 5.
December 5.
I think we should, on December 5, we come up with, and I work, we should be ready, um, I mean, at this particular point, somebody might say punctuality, and that's it. I think as a group, we should say, listen, uh, uh, response, communication, no budget, no, whatever, whatever things we have. I don't think that everybody here has their matrix ready right now.
I, I'm ready. I was ready when this was on our agenda. Actually, we had very thorough reports from both the city manager and the city auditor. Very, they have submitted because they thought they were on the agenda for performance review. So I was prepared, I, I, I would hope that everyone read their reports, and then also scheduled meetings with those two officers. Uh, I, I think on December 5, first of all, how delayed are we on the city manager's review? When was that supposed to have been? One year?
Several months ago.
Um, so it was supposed to be in July, but because of the.
Right.
Volume of items, we, we didn't, we weren't able to.
I understand, because, well, we went through a lot of, uh, events, but that should have been, July was your one year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, then I think it would be unconscionable if we did not conclude that review at our next meeting on December 5. That's six months after we should have done it.
If I may, I just want to facilitate, um, to Commissioner Sturman's request, um, under exhibit one, Commissioner Sturman, there is a, a matrix that follows the ICMA guideline, and, um, these, these are different focus areas, uh, for performance, and if you would like, um, you, you can, you can feel free to, to update those.
Okay.
Or adjustments needed.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, one, one thing is, uh, it's a holiday coming up, I'm leaving first thing tomorrow morning, I'm not going to be back in town till right before the next meeting, I'm not going to have an opportunity to meet with them, I ask for at least one more meeting to, uh, give me the opportunity to meet with the officers.
With both officers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you're, you're going away for two weeks?
Yeah, yeah, for the 19th. Two, not two weeks, two meetings, the 19th.
Okay, then, um, all right. So in deference to you, then we'll wait until the second meeting in, in December. Is that, is that give everyone sufficient time to accomplish their needs? All right, apparently it does, so we'll do it the second meeting of December then.
That will be for both the city manager and the city auditor?
And the city auditor.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? There being none, this special meeting is now concluded. Does anyone need to take a break before we go into the, we're good? All right. So now we begin our conference meeting, the city commission, this November 21st, 2023. I appreciate everyone's patience for waiting until we concluded the previous meeting. So today, we have a, a number of items on this agenda, which I'm going to get to in just a moment. We have no, we have no communications from any, uh, of the advisory boards, so we'll just jump right into, uh, old business, we'll start out with business one, uh, this is regarding the New River Crossing update, part two. Mr. City Manager.
Good afternoon, um, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. So today we have this opportunity to discuss further the New River Crossing. We've invited, as, uh, you all directed, the various consultants and that worked on the various reports. Um, I'd like to stress that, um, this is certainly a very significant decision that this commission will have to take, because it will shape the future of the core of the city of Fort Lauderdale. And, um, the way that we have, um, uh, proposed or, uh, put this meeting together is that we'll have, um, two discussions, or have two parts discussions. The first part of the discussion is, um, is each consultant will have a 10 to 15-minute discussion, uh, and synthesis on.
Thank you.
Their reports, and after each consultant finishes their report, um, you will have an opportunity to ask questions specifically about their reports, if you would like. Um, that then concludes the first part. The second part, um, we'll look at the next steps and also think about, um, other, um, perhaps, uh, thoughts about how positioning, um, how economic development, and how, uh, community, um, access will certainly be impacted by, uh, any system for the New River Crossing. With that said, um, I'd like for you all to consider how this New River Crossing, for instance, um, will, will certainly accommodate the number of, of commuter rail crossings and Brightland crossings that will happen in the near future. Um, also, uh, I'd like for you all to think about the marine industry, which is an important component of, um, our economy, and also, um, consider how, um, further economic impacts, uh, for nearby communities like Himar she, or the downtown core, or Sistrunk, as you all have worked in the past, uh, decades in investing in these communities, it's important that we preserve those economic development opportunities that are happening today. With that said, um, Ben now will facilitate those discussions, he will introduce each consultant, and, um, please ask as many questions as you want, because we really like to make sure that you have all the answers for, uh, future decision-making.
Okay. Mr. Rogers.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner, Ben Rogers, Director of Transportation Mobility. So as the city manager, um, previewed, you know, we've got a lot of industry experts here on different fronts, um, from federal lobbyists and, and a focus on financial and, and federal grant opportunities, funding, uh, to private consultants, uh, and to academic lens on, on tunneling and engineering aspects. So, uh, I'm going to introduce each of the speakers, give you a little bit of background about them, and then we'll go in order, um, based on when their reports were provided. Um, so we'll do each one, we'll have, as, as city manager said, 10 to 15 minutes to present on their reports or their findings. Uh, again, there's different approaches and different ways, uh, to come to, uh, conclusion, um, so I don't think we're looking at who's right and who's wrong, but really trying to get just an overall understanding of, uh, the work that they performed, uh, what was included in it, and to give the commission a, a better understanding or a well-rounded understanding, uh, of their work effort. So with that, uh, the first, one of the first, uh, speakers is going to be from the Florida Department of Transportation, is Phil Schwab, who's an in-house consultant to District Four in the Office of Modal Development, where he serves as FDOT's project manager for the BCR South project, has been involved with the commuter rail project since February of 2020. He has over 30 years of experience in transportation industry, working in multiple states, assisting owners, uh, and delivering major projects and programs. So before Phil starts his presentation, I'm going to go ahead and just introduce all of the, all of the, uh, experts on the panel, and then we'll turn it over to Phil. Uh, from the Lochner team, uh, Don Skelton is a civil engineer graduate of the University of Florida, and currently serves as the Southeast Region Manager for HW Lochner, overseeing the operations for transportation infrastructure in Florida. He has over 36 years of experience, and prior to joining Lochner, he spent 23 years with the Florida Department of Transportation, and served as a District Seven Secretary for over seven years. His career includes background in PDNE, planning, work programming, and senior management. Uh, his colleague, also part of the Lochner team, is Martin Knights, who has extensive civil engineering experience in urban tunneling, transit, hydro, energy, public health, storage infrastructure projects. Uh, he's served as the President of the International Tunneling Association, and is a Fellow of the Royal Academy of Engineering. He has decades of experience working for engineering firms before starting his independent practice. Martin is currently the non-executive chair of the London Bridge Associates, which is a construction consultancy focused on tunneling and underground infrastructure. Martin has recently worked with US clients on transit, metro, and energy projects in California, New York, and Florida, and his other current work includes the UK high-speed two-tunneling, uh, the Shenai Metro, and UK nuclear decom. From the Mooney Consulting Team, Dr. Michael Mooney is the Bruce E. Grucock Distinguished Chair Professor of Underground Construction and Tunneling at the Colorado School of Mines, where he directs the Center for Underground, as well as the Postgraduate Degree Program and Online Graduate Certificate in Underground Construction and Tunnel Engineering. He teaches and leads research in tunnel design and construction, support and excavation, and civil infrastructure engineering. He's authored over 200 peer-reviewed publications, and has delivered keynote lectures on tunneling throughout the world. Dr. Mooney is a licensed professional engineer and consulting engineer, and has served as an owner advisor, an expert review member, a contractor advisor, an expert witness, and as a dispute review board expert on numerous projects within the US and internationally. From Akin Gump is Susan Lent, she's a partner at the law firm of Akin Gump Strauss Haller and Feld. She advises public and private sector entities on federal funding and financing of transportation and other infrastructure projects, uh, complying with federal laws and regulations in governing infrastructure projects. Before joining Akin in 1988, she was on council of the House of Representatives Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure. And then lastly, from the BDO team, uh, Umer Yekub is the Practice Leader for Infrastructure Advisory in P3. He has more than 20 years of experience in infrastructure space, and has advised on major infrastructure projects, and executed transactions across a wide range of social infrastructure, as well as transit and transportation projects. He has advised on the development of public partner, private partnerships, uh, and infrastructure projects to public sector clients, including federal funding agencies, and worked through complete transaction life cycles from project conception, through debt arrangement, and project management. Umer has advised and executed more than 45 infrastructure projects, uh, valued above $25 billion. Uh, on his team is Nazir Munfa, is a Principal at Gal Zedler Consultants, a specialized global tunneling and underground engineering firm. He has over 40 years of tunneling experience in the US, Canada, Europe, Middle East, and Latin America. He is an adjunct professor at Columbia University, and was the principal author of the Federal Highway Administration Tunnel Design Manual. He's published over 50 technical papers, presented in various national and international conferences, and is an active member of the US Underground Construction Association and the International Tunneling Association. Among his projects are the Port of Miami, the Istanbul Straight Crossing, the Marmory Tunnels under the Boss Forest, the East Side Access in New York, and the Gateway Tunnel under the Hudson River. And last but not least, sitting next to me is Tom John, who's the co-chair of the P3 Public Infrastructure Group and a partner of Public Affairs Group of Ice Miller. He concentrates his practice on public infrastructure, government procurement, and public-private partnerships. During his career, he's worked with developers, engineering companies, contractors, and other various government entities. His unique background provides valuable insight and project perspectives necessary to work through legal and regulatory issues at the local, state, and federal level. His experience in procurement consulting, advising, deal structuring, and drafting, and he's worked with parties involved in the Indiana Toll Road Concession, City of Indianapolis Water/Wastewater Transaction, Indianapolis Parking Meter Concession, and the Marion County Justice Center Procurement. So with that, I feel like the city clerk, uh, and I feel your pain, David, on reading all this stuff. But, uh, I wanted to, again, illustrate the expertise that we have here, there's a wide range of knowledge, especially in the tunneling, tunneling industry. Um, I think it's a rare opportunity this commission will have in the second phase to be able to dialogue and, and, and talk with these, uh, industry experts, to learn more about, um, project development, um, and what it takes, uh, and their experiences in other, uh, projects across the world. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to, um, to Phil Schwab with FDOT, um, to talk through the FDOT, FDOT studies and where they are with BCR South. Uh, and just for the record, Mayor, uh, there was a revised exhibit two that went out last night for the commission, um, and that was, uh, in response to, uh, the city provided some slides, uh, based off of our understanding, uh, and FDOT provided a, a recent workshop memo, or a memo that they put, a newsletter memo they put out, um, for their backup materials.
Okay. Mr. Schwab.
Uh, one second.
Yes.
Oh, thank you very much, Ben. Uh, is, um, just for the, is, um, White House, are they, are they present today or not?
The White House group is not here today.
Okay.
They were, they were invited.
Okay, is it, anybody from the county here?
There's no one on the county from, uh, a representative at this panel, I, I'm not sure if there's members, uh, in the audience or not.
Okay, and I, I thought that MPO was going to be here too. Is there anybody from MPO? Oh, there is. Uh, oh, is that Brian?
Brian Kellert.
And nobody from Brightline is here, though, are they?
It's hard for me to see.
No, Brian is here, yeah, he, that, for the record, he did wave, and that was Brian, I, okay, uh, nobody from Brightline, though, right?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all.
Commissioner, I, I believe, uh, members of the county are here, um, Mr. Keller is in, in the audience.
Yeah. Oh, great, thanks. Kevin? Yes, okay.
Well, the reason, my understanding is the reason why no one from the White House group is here is because after their last meeting, they indicated that they wouldn't be, um, participating in any further meetings with, uh, this city, uh, because their contract had expired, and if we wanted to extend their contract, we would have to renegotiate it. So it was our understand, so we did put the word out, and, uh, and they, they declined to attend today.
Yeah, and they did write us all a letter dated November 13th, 2023, explaining everything, and then also included a thumb drive with all of the information.
Okay, well, I, I did meet with, I think that they had scheduling conflicts for today is what they indicated to me, uh, I met with them over the weekend.
Can I ask the city manager to comment on that?
Yes, I did.
So they met with you?
Yes.
Okay, it's okay, Mr. Schwab.
No, 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 no. Mayor, hold on, hold on, hold on. Mayor, please, could I, could I just have the city manager comment on that? That's something that is inconsistent with my understanding.
Is that right? Okay.
So, uh, I'll ask Ben to, he was inviting the consultants. So I'll ask Ben to, he was inviting the consultants.
Yeah, so we reached out to the White House group to see if they'd come. As you recall, they were here on November 7th and spoke briefly when we talked about having the follow-up meeting today. I do believe, as Commissioner Sturman alluded to, that there was a scheduling issue with the holiday week, and that's why they're not here. I think to what the mayor and Commissioner Glassman were referring to is that letter they'd sent, more or less memorialized that their project efforts were concluded.
So they're both right.
So just so I'm clear with that, project efforts are concluded. Normally, whenever we have consultants do something for us, after the report has been delivered, they do make themselves available for follow-up questions for an extended period of time. So there's no indication from the White House group that they're not open to that, it's just that they couldn't make today's meeting.
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, that's, that's different.
And one other point, they did indicate to me that if we have a joint city-county MPO meeting, they would be available for that, too.
Well, we had hoped that this would have been that meeting, and when we, when we asked the county if they wanted to participate, they declined.
No, they had some.
No, Mr. Keller is here. No, I'm talking about county commissioners. I'm talking, I spoke with several county commissioners, and they, and they declined to attend. So.
No, I think they have a conflict today. That's what I was told.
Well.
I think they are willing to meet with us, they just couldn't do it today.
Okay, so why don't we hear from the experts today, and then we can have another meeting?
Oh, sure. No, no, I'm not being confrontational. This is, this is not here nor there. I'm not, don't, don't read anything.
I'm glad Mr. Keller is here. He's always been, he's always been great. He's always participated in every meeting we've invited him to, or we've, he's invited us to. So we're trying to create as much cooperation as possible. So the fact that they're not, certain people aren't here or not, I think we need to get past that and let Mr. Schwab begin his presentation.
Sure.
Mr. Schwab. There you go.
Welcome. Thank you very, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon. Again, Phil Schwab, in-house consultant at FDOT. I've been the project manager for the commuter rail since, I want to say it was February 21. And just to give you some background, FDOT had completed a feasibility study focused on the new river crossing. They looked at three bridge alternatives, as well as a tunnel alternative, very high level. And what that feasibility study had done was have an estimate in there, which was, again, high level. They look at a few major items and then use percentages to fill in the rest. But that was sufficient to move all those alternatives into what's called a PDNE study. So that's kind of in the rearview mirror, and that's partially the slides that the city had put together. They were primarily focused on the feasibility studies, but that's really, was used for a specific purpose. And then the PDNE study, and again, the feasibility study that was done, I think you referenced it as the Cordino Report. Cordino was the contractor leading that effort, but they had HDR develop the estimate. So, so it's really an HDR estimate. Cordino was doing the, the other aspects of the report or leading that, and HDR was a subconsultancy.
What is HDR?
Pardon me?
What is HDR?
HDR is an engineering firm.
Okay.
They prepared the estimates that you see in the Cordino Report, as well as the HDR Report, which is an attachment.
Okay.
To your agenda.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to clarify that, because there seem to be some misunderstandings from, from my understanding. So regardless, the latest estimate we had, and I had given Ben the newsletter, which was dated January of 2022, so that's really the last time the DOT had spent a lot of effort trying to develop an estimate. We had a alternatives public workshop, which we held at the Broward Center as part of the PDNE efforts for public input and letting people know the different alternatives that were being looked at. That was in January of 2022. Between January, and I'm going to say August of 2022, we also did several stakeholder meetings, civic associations, just to get the word out, get more feedback, and there really was no consensus that was formed, and that's where you saw the county commission electing to vote on a locally preferred alternative for BCR South, which, which brings it up to South Fort Lauderdale. And then that's when the city and county worked together with the MPO to develop additional analysis. You enlisted the White House group to do that. So at the time, our estimate was about $1.8 billion for a tunnel, and we utilized, we had more of an alignment set up. We utilized a twin bore system. When they started looking at the single bore, they were running the constructability challenges and issues and decided it was going to be cheaper and easier to build a twin bore tunnel. And I understand there can definitely be arguments of single bore and double bore, and I've seen different sketches, and you'll hear from the true tunnel experts as we go down the line. And, and I know they're dealing with very limited information. And, and again, we're developing estimates to help weigh and budget. Everything will have to, all of our projects, one of our goals of our study is to ensure that we're maintaining our federal eligibility, because we're counting on a lot of federal money to help support whatever moves forward. And in order to do that, the FTA, Federal Transit Administration, will have to ensure that the project is project-ready and feasible. They have different competition ways to look at the funding, and the goal is to try and get up to 50% on these major projects, but you're going to have to go through a process. Just a little bit on schedule for that process, you're going to have to complete the NEPA study, which is the environmental action that you take. And most likely, because of the controversy and everything that's going on and potential impacts of really most all of the alternatives, you're, you're now looking at what's called an environmental impact statement. And, and they can run, you'll hear different ranges, but once you get to a point with FTA, like their schedule, I believe, is two years to complete it, but you have to have a lot of work done ahead of that two years, because typically, they're going to run five to seven years. So I just want to point that out. And by the time you complete and get your, your action, approval of the environmental document, then you have to enter into a risk workshop with FTA. So whatever estimates are being developed, whoever develops them, they're going to have to pass FTA's approval, and they'll run a risk analysis on that before they move forward with funding.
So this is for either bridge or tunnel?
For asking for federal funds.
Right. So it's five to seven years for an environmental study, and then how many years for the, for the risk?
Well, they won't, they won't have the risk workshop till you're complete your environmental.
Environmental, right.
And you're going to hear ranges for environmental impact statements from anywhere from two years to seven years, and some probably would take longer. It all depends on what you run into. I mean, they're just.
I'm going to turn your mic off right now.
Well, if you look at the history of environmental impact statements, they, they take quite a while, regardless. I, I just want to make sure everybody's clear.
So before construction can even begins, those two studies have to be done, correct?
Yeah, and, and the, the second part is a risk workshop that they evaluate to see, to help them decide whether you're going to get funding or not. So you're not even going to know the, the actual funding that you get until you're completing the NEPA study, your environmental study.
Okay.
So, so I know there's a lot of discussion on the, the IJA funding and trying to capture that, but I just don't think that's realistic to, to use as a target. I know it helps push momentum and so forth, but I just don't know how that can be captured for, for a crossing at this point versus whatever the funding is at the time when you're ready and complete the environmental study. So, so I just want to throw some of those things out, because I know everyone has different, and I'm glad to hear from everybody else on their opinions on that, but I wanted to point that out. My, my goal here today was primarily just to give you a little bit of a history of what FDOT has done. We had gotten to the alternative public workshop, and prior to that, when HDR completed their estimate, we also enlisted WSP, another tunnel engineer, out of the central office contract, more as an independent review of what they had done and assessment. And we had them review it, make comments, and kind of talk back and forth to get to a number that we felt very comfortable in. So when we left that alternative public workshop, although there were still arguments over our numbers, we felt we were complete, we've done enough from a cost estimating standpoint, and we, we leave it to everybody else to, to continue the cost estimating, but that's, that's where we had left it, but we felt comfortable in that number. We, we made sure that we weren't overly conservative, because it really doesn't pay to be too conservative, but also you don't want to cut yourself short in these processes. So from a budgeting standpoint, you want to ensure that you're not going back for more money at some point, especially large numbers. And that's part of the FTA process, why they make you go through a risk workshop, to get to that finish line or get funding granted to them, because they don't, they don't want a problem where they're, they're flipping 50% of a bill and then having to kind of ask for more.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Who's our next speaker?
Quick, quick question.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
And again, I'm going to, the meaty questions, this, this is an easy one, but before I begin, I want to thank every one of you for being here. I find this absolutely fascinating. Whatever you're doing, I'm enjoying listening to you, and thank you so much for, for giving us your time. You, you said one thing, you said that for federal funding, we need 50%, but 50% of what?
So typically, our target, when we budget, when we estimate how much the local share will be, we'll look to try and capture up to 50% of the federal funding. And, and I'll give you an example, the, the Federal Transit Administration has what's called a capital improvement grant program, and they have what's called a new starts grant and a small starts grant. And so they're competitive in nature, and the new starts can, can, you can capture more federal funding, but you have to be more competitive. And so there's some strategies where you actually ask for less than 50% because it puts you in a more competitive environment so that you can secure the funding. The BCR South project, which was the LPA that was decided upon last year, we're moving forward with the FTA as a small starts program. So we can get up to $150 million, and, and the percentage is not as important on the small starts project. The new starts project, which the Miami-Dade Northeast Quarter Commuter Rail that goes from downtown Miami up to Aventura, their capital cost estimate is approximately $540 million. They're seeking a new starts grant, which can go greater than $150 million in grant money, and their target now is about 48%, because that allows them to be cost-effective when they get raided because of the formulas they use and so forth. And so they're now looking at 48%.
And where are they going to get the rest of the money?
So the rest of the money, they're looking to, to basically, I guess it would be 26% local funds from the county itself and 26% from, from the state. Similar to when we had presented, and it might even be in that newsletter that was sent around, whatever the estimates were, we were assuming that we'd try for 50% federal money, and I think it was a 25%, 25% split between local monies and state monies. And that was assuming you're competitive in that environment.
Now, is that 50% of the, of the construction, the total construction? 50% of what, the total construction?
They actually count all the monies, the capital costs we, we supply include the project development, engineering, design, construction, vehicle costs as part of that. So it's all that upfront money right away as part of that as well.
But no operation and maintenance, just the construction?
Correct.
Okay. And engineering planning?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
So Mr. Mayor, do you want to see if there's any feedback from each specific speaker, or do you want to wait?
Why don't we just let each speaker speak? I think that, because I think there's some additional information than what Mr. Schwab has presented that will, will give us some context. So why don't we just continue with that?
Okay, so the next firm would be Lochner and Don and Martin.
Okay. Mr. Skelton, how are you?
Doing fine. Mayor, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to be here this afternoon. I'm just going to kind of set the stage and go over what Lochner's scope was in, in looking at the task that we were engaged by the city to do, and then turn it over to Martin Knights from our team, who is the tunneling expert. We were engaged by the city to review the, what was the current, what is the current tunnel alternative, the twin bore alternative that DOT Cordino had developed, HDR had cost out, and at a very high level, look at alternate construction concepts that may be a little bit more cost-effective, maybe some trade-offs with some construction duration and impacts during construction. And then identify, again, at a more high level, just review the cost information from the HDR report and, and give that an overlook. Our report included several alternatives, alternative methods, and I will let Martin go through those for consideration for further investigation. As, as Phil had identified, the alternatives need to be brought forward, and so we think the, the tunnel provides the value side. We, you know, we know costs are going to be one thing, but we always want to look at the value side, and that's why it becomes very important when developing the purpose and need for that NEPA study that Phil talked about, that you include all the things that the city wants to achieve in, in whatever alternative comes forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Martin.
Thanks, Don. Thank you very much for inviting me here this afternoon. Welcome the opportunity to share some thoughts as well. I chair a medium-sized consultancy company specializing in tunneling in London. It's called London Bridge, and you wonder what, how that comes about.
How ironic.
I, I won't go into the detail of that, but there's good reasons.
There's no rhyme, London tunnels falling down.
When they set up the company, it was, they named the company after the last big metro station that they built in London, so hence, hence that was the name. And we partner with Lochner for U.S. business interests. Okay. When I was president of the International Tunneling Association, which is a sort of global forum for tunnellers, I consistently put the message forward that tunneling isn't just about bored tunnels, there's subs, there's the, how you form underground space. So when I articulated this to the mayor and the city manager last September, when we were having discussions about possible alternatives, because I think your imperative at that time was, tunnel sounds expensive, of ways of cutting down those costs. So I said, well, there are construction methods that you could use, but they, they need to be looked at in, in more detail. So what we did was, we prepared a report and review based on the scope that Don's just said, which informed, informed the city on possible other methods of excavating the tunnel and constructing the tunnel other than the bored tunnel, which seemed to be articulated fairly well in reports, but I couldn't see any evidence that the other construction methods for building something underground had been looked at. So this was for your familiarity. And we felt that some of those construction methods might actually chime with some of the coastal construction techniques that are well-known in Florida, such as open cut and coffer dams and being, and we slowly realized that this just wasn't just about cutting, doing a tunnel underneath a new river. It was about more than that. It was actually something that could improve the public realm, but we concentrated on what could be construction methods that could reduce the cost. We didn't evaluate them, we just said, there's a possibility that if you could see, if you could manage the constraints of doing open cut construction, or what we call top-down, which is forming a cap over an excavation and supported on piles, you could then do all that noisy impactful work of excavation underneath that. And that's been done in Amsterdam and also in Copenhagen and other cities, where they've had the challenges of utilities, road crossings, all that kind of thing. But that impact is over a period of three, four years whilst the construction is going on. But the legacy then after that is you have an underground space in which to use for the, for the rail tunnel. So that's what the, that's what the main thrust of our, our report was. And of course, there's an example right here, and under our noses, in Fort Lauderdale. 60 years ago, you built the Henry Tierney Tunnel, and that wasn't done by bored tunnel, that was done by, I, I can't remember what it was done by, but it was either done by open coffer dam, or it was done by some sort of precast concrete box, but whatever it was, there was a precedent for it. So again, that gave me the confidence to try and sort of illuminate what that might be. So we've highlighted the potentiality of doing that, but we didn't, we're not specifically championing that or advocating that, because we believe that the, we largely support the FDOT report on the use of bored tunneling, particularly if it's going to be a long tunnel and it has other benefits other than just the parochial getting underneath the river. It actually is something, if you do it, if it's much longer than that, it's actually providing something that improves the public realm of Fort Lauderdale with all the opportunities that you can have of putting something underground. You've got the space above, you've removed a barrier to the western, western fringes of the Central Business District. And we largely support the idea of a twin bore tunnel, but you could have a single bore tunnel, and there are precedents for that. I know there's precedents for that because they're thinking about developing that for this, for the VTA San Jose project in California, and it's a well-known tunneling technique that's been used in Barcelona as well, which is a single bore tunnel, which I think Dr. Mooney has elaborated in more detail in his, in his report. So it's, it's feasible, and we support largely what's been done. We, we also, we were asked to also look at the, the cost report that was produced and give a view on that, and we felt that that was a very thorough, well-thought-out. A lot of time and money has been spent on doing that, and it's itemized in a way that, you know, you can't really challenge it, because given the information that was available, they've done the best job, and I wouldn't want to challenge that. The only, the only thing I would offer is that some of the percentages that have been used in the, for contingency, I think nowadays, there's a frightening inflationary factor for many reasons, it's all well-publicized, not just post-COVID. And I'm, in projects that I'm working on in the U.K. and also in Europe, we're actually looking at what the base case cost is. So at the moment, I think the base case cost is $1.82 billion. That was 2021. That's probably about two, that base cost is probably more like $2 billion. But it's a concept. It hasn't, it's not well-developed, it's lacking a lot of detailed information, but we think probably a con- It's lacking a lot of detailed information, but we think probably a contingency of about 60 to 70% needed to be added on to that. I'm working on a project, I've been working on a project in Dublin for the Metrolinks project there. It's got about 10 stations on it, but it's about eight or nine miles in length. And the politicians and the city were championing this metro project in 2012. And the price that was on the, that the public were made aware of was 2 billion euros. So let's say 2 billion dollars. 2016, when I joined the project, it had gone up to 2.5. When I started working on with the city as the expert panel, it had gone up to 3 billion. And the politicians were getting nervous because they kept on going back to the city authorities and saying, you sure it's still 3 billion? Because the public are saying, two months ago, they've just got to the maturity of a design and they're saying it's 10 billion, 10 billion. And that's a combination of stakeholder involvement, pressure from the public to have social value and to build those into the civil, build those into the civil engineering infrastructure. So all those are big pressures that are on. So I think although FDOT used standard contingency figures, I think we're living in an unprecedented time where, you know, I think some of the predictions would make astrologers look perfectly decent.
So these contingency figures also relate to any project that's done there, whether it be bridge or tunnel?
I've, I'm confining my comments really to tunneling.
Right. But I mean, but the terminology you're using, inflation, public realm, you know, public pressure for environmental considerations, that would relate to any project we do?
You're absolutely right. And just looking at the cost indices in the UK and also in the United States.
Okay.
Which suggests that over the last two years, we're talking about 20% increase in prices. We're project that, you know, there are many projects that are suffering from that right now. And so you've got managing the clients and the owners' expectations based on very little hard, well, based on basic information and putting a, trying to, putting a price out into the public based on that little information is putting you in a dangerous position. And I think socializing it at a high level, you know, one has to be careful about where we are with, where we are at the moment. That's just, that's a personal comment based on what I've seen, seen in the industry. But no doubt about it, bored tunnel is the best robust system of doing the, doing the crossing, whether it's twin or whether it's single bore. I did, I did a presentation to a group of U.S. engineers in the, in the UK about a month ago. And the theme, and I was talking to the 50 odd engineers and we were talking about procurement of projects. And the theme of the discussion was, well, you know, how can we better deliver our projects? And the agreement was that there's too little design being done and going to market at too early a stage. And then the problems get identified in the fat tailed end of the project where the mistakes or the poor scope has been found out and it's cost a lot of money to put it right. And there's a book that's circulating at the moment, which I recommend reading, which is about how to get big projects done. And it's all about, it's got a database of about 16,000 projects. And it's consistently, the message is define purpose, define scope, be certain about the alternatives, do more planning around that before you commit to putting this out into the public and managing people's, people's expectations. I was going to give a presentation, but I don't want to overrun my time. But hopefully you've, you've read what we've, we've put in there and we can talk about details if you wish to ask me questions. That's my, that's my pitch.
Could you just, could you define one term? I've heard this before. I think you said open cut. Is that, is that the term that you've used?
Yes, it's, it's literally doing your cutting. But you, and that, and you would leave that open, you'd have slopy sides or you'd put a pile, a piled wall. But what you can do in order to mitigate that sort of very open method of excavation, you start by putting a row of piles down on either side, which would then form the sidewalls of your, you know, your, your passageway for the railway underneath. Then you'd cast a concrete slab over the top and then your mechanical plant and everything then would then go in and do the enabling works as well for the utility work and do the excavation for the tunnel. So you've largely mitigated some of the visual and some of the noise aspects. But it, there's a fact, there's factors to be considered like geology, road crossings, all that kind of thing. So, and all that detail needs studying.
Well, the question I have for you, when it comes to the part where you're, you're crossing the river with that method, is that going to mean a total shutdown of the river during that phase?
You could go, there are press, so in, take the Danish or the Dutch engineering, they would approach this by doing what they call a cofferdam approach.
Could you speak more closely at your microphone?
Yeah, do a big problem. What you do is you cross the river by partly occupying part of the river, allowing navigation to continue. But you have a cofferdam where you can then sink that down, do the excavation, either put a precast concrete box in place or cast something in situ, cover it over the top so it's then re, oh yeah, it's all explained on the pictures over there. Thank you, Michael.
There you go.
Yeah. That's what I tried to, I tried, I tried to show this in these illustrations about what, and this, these techniques will be familiar to the contracting companies on the East Coast. And, but I'm not championing this in, it's more for illustration that there are other methods out there.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, next speaker.
So next we have Dr. Mooney. I've asked him to, to give comments on his, his findings in his report, but to also just provide the commission with a little bit of educational experience on boring machines and tunneling 101.
Okay. Hello, Dr. Mooney?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be here. I will give an assessment of, of the review I did, but then I will kind of spin this in a bit of an educational approach. Thanks for that. So I do have some slides that I'll just jump to. So as those are coming up, maybe I'll just, as background, I got involved this summer to do a review, an independent assessment of the existing feasibility study findings with really considerations for advances in tunneling technologies and recent performance achievements on, on projects. To look at the single bore tunnel versus twin bore and then the station aspects and the miscellaneous aspects, benefits of going underground versus elevated structure, perhaps from a non-technical nature, aesthetics, noise, et cetera. So slides are up now, so I'll just kind of, looks like my, oh, there we go. I'm just going to move on here to the next slide. All right. Am I not operating this thing correctly? There we go. Okay. So here you just see the. All right. So you no doubt have probably seen these two options that were proposed in the initial studies, the Cordino Group Study in 2020. On the left was the single bore, the larger single bore tunnel that you see there, roughly 40 feet. We'll just approximate these with the two train lines inside the single bore tunnel. And then on the right hand side, you see the twin bore tunnels with one train in each tunnel, which is roughly around 25 foot diameter. Oops, okay, there's a delay. Let me back up. So I'll just talk about a couple of things. First of all, geotechnical considerations or gealod, the ground conditions. This is the alignment that comes directly from the FDOT public workshop presentation that essentially just shows the cross sectional view from the north portal, which you see in the upper left. And you see the cut and cover underground station there. And then in the bottom part, you see the portal to the south. You see the overall length of this is approximately 12,000 feet or slightly longer according to this from end to end, slightly more than two miles. This just shows a close up of the cut and cover station in that feasibility assessment. And you see the relative depths. This is approximately 90 feet deep to the bottom of the excavation. And so I did a, let me back up to the previous slide. There we go. So I just want to point out that from a geotechnical perspective, ground conditions is certainly feasible to essentially build underground, to tunnel underground in the ground conditions. Again, you don't have a lot of ground conditions because that hasn't been commissioned for this project, but there are some boring logs in the area that demonstrate what the ground conditions are. And tunnels have been built in this in far more challenging conditions in the past. Okay. So this project is, you're probably all very familiar with this. This is the Port of Miami Tunnel Projects, which I'd argue, just looking at what the ground conditions currently are here, this was more challenging to build in. So this was the, just if, in case you're not familiar with this, this is the project that built twin large diameter tunnel, road tunnels out to Dodge Island. And you see on the right hand side, this nice mesmerizing, frankly, time lapse video of the tunnel boring machine coming through onto Dodge Island. That's a 42 foot diameter tunnel boring machine. So in the context of going underneath Fort Lauderdale, one of the options is a tunnel boring machine tunnel that size, within which you'd place two side by side rails. So in that particular project, they bored through to Dodge Island, put the TBM, tunnel boring machine on this turntable, spun it around and took it right back to the other side. In the context here, you can see there that was constructed over a four year period. It was, tunnel construction itself was 15 months, roughly 500 feet per month of excavation in that particular project. What I wanted to point out was the challenging ground conditions they faced in that project and tunnelled through that quite successfully. So this just shows a cross sectional profile, the layer cake type sand and limestone geology that you have in South Florida. And you can see that alignment there. They, in this particular project, they had a real challenging layer, which is this keelago formation, this coralline limestone that had large voids in it that can cause challenges when tunneling through. So they had to take quite extraordinary measures to get through that, which included lots of grouting from barges in the ship canal there and to essentially fill up all those voids in the limestone. So these are the kinds of considerations that you may, you have to consider in projects where you have limestone. But again, it doesn't appear just from the preliminary geotech that you have this situation. But in the event that you do, what came out of the, that particular project is this inspiration for this tunnel boring machine. I don't know if you can click start on that video there. But this shows just an illustration of how a tunnel boring machine essentially burrows through the ground like a submarine and counterbalances the water pressure and can deal with essentially voids in limestone. Perhaps it's not working. Oh, I just clicked the button. There we go. So this just in the top left shows you an operational approach with this tunnel boring machine technology. This is, for those tech geeks out there, it's called a variable density tunnel boring machine. And this counterbalances the water pressures that you would have in the ground here. And if you look in the bottom right there, you can see the TBM moving through the ground. And in the event that you have these porous areas, these car stick features, which are voids in limestone, then this is the type of tunnel boring machine that was essentially designed to manage that kind of ground. All right. Moving on then, this just shows what I summarized in my report, the ground conditions lend themselves to this slurry pressure balance or variable density pressure balance type tunnel boring machines. I just wanted to describe real quickly how these machines operate. They simultaneously excavate through the ground and then they install the permanent structure. So you see those concrete lining segments. Well, it started at the front there. You see this tunnel boring machine is grinding away at the ground. It brings it in, it sucks it out through a piping system all the way to the surface. It would separate the sands and the limestone from the slurry and then it would take away that sands and limestone's materials for other use, other project uses or, or to, to a dump site. And then it recycles this slurry that is used to counterbalance the, the face. I think the next slide shows this a bit better. So on the left hand side here, you see the excavation approach there. And then what you see these, what you see happening in this video is these precast concrete tunnel lining segments are installed as the tunnel boring machine moves to the ground. And you see here just the installation approach of a ring of precast concrete lining segments. This is the permanent structure. This is as tunneling through the ground, these segments are put in place. These are designed for up to 150 year service lives. And so they'll be there for a long, long time. In fact, longer than the design life of a bridge. And so you see that process of excavating through the ground and installing those tunnel lining segments. On the right hand side, in the top, you just see some gaskets there, rubber gaskets that are placed between segments that sandwich together. And in the bottom right, you see you, you end up with a quite dry internal constructed tunnel. All right. So I just wanted to comment a little bit on this single bore larger approach. There is a trend in terms of train and transit tunneling to move towards, instead of twin bore tunnels, one train and one tunnel, smaller diameter, to move to the larger bore with tunnels, two tracks within that bore and also to build the stations within that large bore. And I'll talk about that in a second, the benefits of that. But here's just some example projects from left to right. Barcelona, Spain, San Jose, which is currently under design. And then Toronto Scarborough Line, which is under construction right now. So you can see from each one of these projects, you see the, the stations are built within the actual structure. So that whole concept of in the, in the feasibility studies of building a nine, a thousand foot long, which is three football fields, cut and cover structure in downtown Fort Lauderdale, instead of cutting open the ground like that, you're not doing any of that. You're going underneath the roadway with a bored tunnel, large bore, and you're building the station platforms within that large bore. And then, and this, this kind of shows, I should have shown this originally. See, on the left hand side, you see kind of the classical approach of essentially cut and cover, which is digging down through the roadway, through all the utilities, which can be a huge cost risk, to moving to the right hand side, which is you're still using the right of way for the large bore, but you're moving the, this construction off to the side of the road. And here's just some illustrations of projects, contemporary projects that have done this. Here's the large diameter tunnel with the platforms in the stations, two train lines. And then you see, either in the top left or in the bottom right, you see sort of offset access to those large bore. So you go down through private property that's purchased, but you're looking at more smaller size, smaller footprint access to those. This is a good rendering that shows you what that looks like. There's the main tunnel with the stations inside, and then you can see just access to them. If you look at that middle structure there, you see the escalators and access down to the tunnel. Finally, this is a rendering from the San Jose Tunnel. Okay. In the interest of time, and just a couple of miscellaneous points. Underground construction is designed to be significantly less disruptive during construction than surface or elevated construction. The transport of excavated material is a challenge to deal with, but you The transport of excavated material is a challenge to deal with, but you have the freight rail lines, so that could be actually a real benefit to getting instead of truck traffic on the roads. Cut and cover station would interact with extensive utilities, which I understand is, is a big concern within the right of way. And the large bore essentially avoids this. One I do mention, I mentioned it earlier, tunnels are designed for 150, up to 150 year design service lives. So when considering comparison costs, a life cycle approach is a good way to think of that in terms of assets. Just skipping down to seven and eight, really flood risk must be considered for sure for a tunnel option, but that can absolutely be designed for. And then the quality of life aspects, the noise, abatement by going underground, aesthetics by going out underground, emissions and safety is, is more advantageous with a tunnel than elevated structure. And those aspects have not been captured in the cost analysis to date. So in closing, I would just say this, last slide, promise. Urban areas are undergoing, worldwide really are undergoing significant change prompted by the increase in population density. If you look on the right hand side, this urbanization trend, North America is leading the world with nearly 90% urbanization. The increase in elderly population, you see the bottom right side where, where the elderly population in this country is, is going to skyrocket. A greater desire for improved quality of urban life, including lower noise, more green and natural space, social environmental justice, a greater need for multimodal transportation, including autonomous vehicles, micro mobility, et cetera. All of these point to undergrounding of the transport of people and goods, and we're seeing this trend globally and, and in the U.S. And so I would say whether there's a five to one upfront capital cost differential as suggested in some of the reports, or a two to one or a three to one ratio that is more typical between underground and elevated, that cost differential decreases further when considering sustainability, life cycle cost analysis, noise, aesthetics, quality of life that all favor underground. And with that all.
I have a question. In regards to the life cycle of the tunnel versus the bridge, could you identify for me a tunnel that's 150 years old that has actually sustained the life cycle or lifespan versus the 75 year to a bridge?
For sure. I, I would turn to my colleagues on my left and right. I'm sure there's tunnels in London for sure and tunnels in New York City.
250 years.
250 years?
Which tunnel is that?
Yeah.
Canal tunnels.
Canal.
While you're at that though, because I went to college at Polytechnic Institute of New York and studied engineering, and I used to look at the Brooklyn Bridge every day. Dates back to 1883, so I'm not sure about the life cycle of bridges either, so I'll just.
Fair point, fair point. I just noted when I did my study, F dot requirement of 75 year design service life.
They don't build them like they used to, John.
Apparently not, they're apparently not.
Okay, our next speaker.
Next will be Susan Lent from Aiken Gump, talking about federal funding opportunities.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Hi Susan, how are you?
Good, good. Mayor and city council member, then it's nice to see you too, Commissioner.
Apparently I'm overdue for some trips up to DC. We haven't seen you in a while, so.
Exactly, looking forward to it. So I'm, I'm very happy to be here today to talk about closing the gap.
She lives here, you know.
I do live here now, that's right.
Vic Park.
Part time.
Vic Park, I know.
Take her to lunch, John.
Can someone give me the clicker?
Great. So I have a presentation, if I could figure out how to work it.
They have to load it.
Oh, they have to load it, okay. Okay, so I'll just get started and say I'm going to talk about the different potential federal funding and financing options to close the gap for a tunnel. And let me start out by saying, there are a lot of opportunities, but there's also challenges that have to be addressed to take advantage of the opportunities. So starting off with the opportunities, the infrastructure law really was historic, as many of you know, in terms of the funding increase that was, that was made available for transportation. And it's unclear whether we'll ever see anything like that again. So through fiscal year 2026, we've got historic funding levels for transportation, including a large number of competitive grant programs. In, in the past, and still the vast majority of funding for transportation goes to state departments of transportation by formula. But what the 2021 infrastructure law did was it created a, you know, pretty large number of competitive grants where the city or other, you know, the county, the city, other political subdivisions can, can apply directly for the federal funding. Again, the infrastructure law and the Biden administration have placed a lot of significance on environmental justice, equity, and reconnecting communities, which also provides a potentially unique, untimely opportunity to pursue competitive grants for the, for the tunnel. So, and we'll go through some of the competitive grant programs as well as the low cost loan programs, but let me just mention, you know, some of the challenges that will need to, to get addressed. And I mean, one of them was, is NEPA, that was a really good point, that, that NEPA can take a while, although through the past couple of transportation laws, there has been a focus on streamlining the environmental review process and, and dashboards for, for monitoring that. And so depending on the level of environmental impacts and controversy, the environmental review process, there are things to do to, to try to streamline and expedite the environmental review process. And then while I agree that, that certainly under these programs, you can't start to spend money to do anything in terms that, that will impact potentially the outcome of the environmental review. For at least some of the programs, I would say all of them, that whether it's the Federal Transit Administration, Federal Highway Administration, the Federal Railroad Administration, or the Secretary's Office, they will work with you in advance of going, of completing the environmental review. And then also for the grant programs, they like to see that you have a path forward through the environmental review process, but for most of the environmental, most of the grant programs, you don't have to have completed, you don't have to have a, you know, a, a record of decision or finding of, of no significant impact to be able to get a grant. You would just need to have that completed before you could actually start to obligate funds for the project. So I just wanted to mention, mention that. And I also want to mention that each of these programs, and we'll go through them, have specific criteria. So it's important again to start to get ready to take advantage of these opportunities because there are three more years of funding under this infrastructure law. So to the extent that the city wants to take advantage of these federal programs for the tunnel, the time is now to start to get ready so that when these grant notices, a funding opportunity come up, the city is, is well positioned, or whoever is applying for the funding is well positioned to, to pursue the funding. And so then the next thing, which again, I think is something that I've worked with, with, with the city and some of you on, which is helpful is, as I mentioned, you have to meet the grant criteria, but then, you know, having the relationships and, and being able to go to Washington and make the case, and, and Mayor, you've done a great job with this, you know, meeting with the Secretary of Transportation and others, and really laying the groundwork before the competitive grants are announced is really helpful. So that's something, and I know Commissioner Herbst, we've worked on that in the past on the courthouse project. And so I think those, those types of, of steps will be really important. So, so that's just kind of laying out, you know, kind of the framework. And I was going to talk a little bit about some of the opportunities then. Okay, so capital investment grants, which, which we, was mentioned already, that's the Federal Transit Administration program. We talked about the new starts program. And again, that is very much a statutorily defined program with, you know, very strict criteria. And, and, you know, again, you're, there's a benefit to requesting more rather than less funding. And, you know, the one thought on that program is that it could be, you could, you could conceivably get, gets, you know, some of the money from that program, but then you can also get fund, get federal funding, you know, no more than 80%, but you could get federal funding to, to cover, you know, aspects of, you know, if, if the, if the Federal Transit Administration wouldn't fund all of the projects, all of the project costs, you could look to some of these other programs that, that were mentioning below. But again, FTA does go through a multi-year, multi-step process to review the project, evaluating a lot of different factors, testing, making sure that, you know, that everything from an engineering, you know, to, you know, capability, legal capability to manage a project, the ability to operate, you know, a very detailed, very statutorily defined program. But this, this capital investment grants program does make a significant amount of money. It has, there's a significant amount of money. It's a multi-year grant agreement. And so it's, it's something that a lot of these transit projects that are, you know, where there's a, you know, a fixed guideway or a rail commuter rail project, do look to, to this program for funding, as was mentioned. So the next program, the, so the federal state partnership for intercity passenger rail is really an interesting and potentially very attractive and viable opportunity. This program is run through the Federal Railroad Administration. And the reason that you could get, potentially get funding for this project for the tunnel is because of Brightline also operating on the track. So it only, it funds intercity passenger rail projects. It would not fund a commuter rail project if all you were doing was a commuter rail project, but because you, you're, you're operating, you'd be operating Brightline trains also, this is a very large funding program in the current announcement for fiscal year 2023, there's $4.5 billion available for projects outside the Northeast Corridor. And, and so, and so this is an opportunity, because there's, this is one of these things where there's some programs where there's just a ton of competition because so many different kinds of projects can compete. This is a program where like you either have an intercity passenger rail project or you don't, and not everyone has one and very few do. And so, and, and, you know, it's so they, they look at a bunch, at a variety of criteria, I think all of which you could, you could conceivably do well under. You do have to prepare a benefit cost analysis, which you'll have to do for a number of these programs. And again, it's getting ready because when this program announcement, when the funding announcement comes out early next year, it's what state are you in to be able to apply for the funding? Do you have a real project? Will the Federal Railroad Administration be comfortable that if they give you money that you'll actually be able to build something? And so this is, this one, this one again, has the potential to be able to get you, you know, a good, a good amount of money. So this one should be something that you think closely about. And then, did I skip ahead or? Mega grants, okay. So mega grants would sound like it would be a great opportunity because it funds large scale grants, including projects that are part of an intercity passenger rail project. And, and the only, the challenge with this program is that it, there's only a billion dollars annually for it. So they, the Department of Transportation can give, can give you a grant agreement that's over multiple years so that they could give you money and then say, subject to appropriations, they can give you money for the following, you know, you know, you know, next year, following year. But it, to date, it's been very competitive because there's a lot of projects that are applying for this funding and a relatively limited amount of money for it. So, but that's definitely one to, to think about. And then the consolidated rail infrastructure safety improvements, which is known as CHRISI, that's also a smaller program, a billion dollars annually, and the Federal Railroad Administration tends to spread it out. They'll fund a lot of like, you know, grade crossing type projects. But that's also, that also program funds intercity passenger rail and maybe something to look at in terms of funding at least elements of the project. Okay, then raise grants. You know, I throw this, I put this in here, it's 1.5 billion annually. The challenge with this program is it funds everything that you can think of, transportation. And so it's really competitive because it funds transit, it funds highway, it funds freight, you know, it funds streetscapes, it funds all different types of projects. And so it tends to be probably the most competitive of, of all the programs because it is, it is so flexible in terms of, of the types of programs that it funds. Okay. And then I also put the infra program in there, and that, that program is focused more on, on freight and highway movement, although I, I question, I wasn't aware until this, until just before the meeting, that, that, that the current plan would not to put, be putting the freight rail under the tunnel. And so this, this may not be eligible based on that. So this, I think this would be more, this would apply more. I, I was thinking if you were also going to be moving freight as part of it. But this is 1.4 or 5 billion dollars, you know, annually. So then the, the loan, the Department of Transportation Loan Program, the Department of Transportation has two different loan programs. The acronyms are TFI and RIF. Both are, should be available to provide a loan, you know, under, under TFI, it's loans, loan guarantees and lines of credit, and, and RIF is, is loans. And the proceeds of a loan could be used to, to, to pay for a portion of, a portion of all the cost of the tunnel. To receive a loan, the Department of Transportation has to determine that your pro, your, your, that the applicant or the project is creditworthy, meaning you'd have to be able to show that there is a dedicated revenue stream to pay, to pay back the loan. You know, the loans are attractive because you have a, you know, a five years after substantial completion to start making payments and you have, it was 35 years, now it can conceivably be up to 75 years. Although I don't think DOT has done any of those yet and is looking at it still, but you, you have a long period of time to repay the loans. But you'd have to have, whether it was a tax increment district or a sales tax or some, some mechanism that you would, you would be able to have to, to, to pay back a loan. I will say that the loans are, are, I don't want to say easier because, because DOT has, does go through this pretty detailed process where they actually hire an outside financial advisor and an outside law firm to look at your loan and look at, look at the creditworthiness. But they do have a lot of money to make the loans and it tends, you're not, it's not a zero sum game the way a grant is. In other words, they have enough money to lend to projects as there are applicants who are able to meet the criteria. And so they're very interested, the Build America Bureau, which is the department, within Department of Transportation that runs the program, they're very interested in working with potential applicants to try to make these loans work. And there's no competition. They sit down and they meet with you as much as you want to meet with them. So they have different attributes to them. The TFI loans will typically fund up to 33% of project costs that the law says they can do up to 49%, but I think they've done, I don't know if they've ever done that, or they've done it very sparingly. The RIF loan program used to be less competitive because it didn't have any credit subsidy payment associated with it, but that changed. And so now what's good about the RIF program is that you can use the loan proceeds to pay up to 100% of, of a project cost. And again, they have similar, you know, the interest rate is tied to the treasury rate. And so, and either program, and the thing about the Build America Bureau is they'll, they'll work with you based on your needs and tell you like which one might be more attractive based on, on, on the project. So, so that is all I have, and I'm happy to take questions.
If there are no questions, just move on to our next speaker.
Actually, no, I, this, this is, this is kind of the part that I care about the most, Mayor, so if you don't mind, I'd like to go back.
Go ahead.
So Susan, thank you very much. I, I appreciate that. I, I appreciate the, the matrix that you laid out here. Let me just talk a little bit, when we talk about funding, presumably the project owner will be the one that goes for funding at this point. And I know this is a point that came up in our various discussions last time where we were talking about who owns this project. And so I, I want to get back to that and talk about that because alas, I understood, I believe the county is the owner of the project. So before we talk about funding opportunities, I want to know who owns the project, who's applying for all these grants. If the city is not the owner of the project, then conceivably we're not applying for the grant. So I think that's sort of my question zero. And I didn't get an accurate answer to, or an adequate answer to it last time. So let's talk about that because if the city's got to go for funding and we're not the owner of the project, well, that doesn't work. the owner of the project, well, that doesn't work, right? We can't bond out a project we don't own.
Mr. Schwab, do you want to help us out on that? Who owns, who's going to own the bridge? Who's going to own the tunnel?
I'm not sure who's going to own the infrastructure, but it's a county project.
Well, that, what does that mean?
Well, it means the county is the one that's applying currently to the, to FTA for the funding for the BCR South project.
Okay, but that's, but I, I also know to, to Commissioner, to Commissioner's point, I also know that the cities have the ability to apply directly as well. You don't need to have, I know this, the USDOT told me, that the cities can apply directly. But to his, to the Commissioner's point, who's going to own it? And I don't know if that's ever been really resolved. I think the county thinks it's going to own it, and that may be the case. Mr. Kelleher, I know you're way up in the, in the rafters up there, but I believe it's the county that's going to own the project.
So as far as own the project, just to reiterate, the FECR, the freight company, owns the right-of-way. So as far as the infrastructure that's built, whether it's track or platforms for stations or a tunnel within the right-of-way, I don't think it's fully determined who will actually own it. So I know the county is working with FECR as well as Brightline for different agreements that they're going to need for the infrastructure, for the work that the project. And again, when I say project, we're moving forward with BCR South, like I said. So, so it's similar, but a different magnitude and different, different area. It does touch south Fort Lauderdale. So as far as the approach on that, the county will be applying and has applied for small starts grant funding. They're going to be working out agreements with the freight company as well as Brightline to move that forward. And as far as who would own pieces of platform and that stuff that's within the right-of-way, I think that's still to be determined.
Okay. So then, if I understand it correctly, and to follow up on what the mayor is suggesting is that the city could apply for grants. I guess that would then require some kind of, you know, interlocal agreement between us and the county and everybody else to be a participant in the project. So right now, as I understand it, the city has no obligations towards this project financially whatsoever. So any cost overruns, anything that happens in the course of construction is not my financial concern. So if we become a party to an interlocal agreement, we now are on the hook to a certain extent, I, I would assume. From my experience in having done quite a few bond issues, we can't bond out something that we don't own. We can't go to the capital market and borrow for 30 years a billion dollars on an asset that doesn't belong to the city. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
Okay. So I'm, I'm not sure that bonding is, is an opportunity for us as a municipality. Maybe it is for FEC, but I, unless I've missed something along those conversations through the years.
You're absolutely correct. You're absolutely correct. The city would only be applying for grant funding, not, not, not the loans.
So then going back, Susan, we were talking about three years of funding involved. And I'm glad you brought up some of these earlier conversations. So as, as you and I know, we were in the West Wing in the Obama administration, we were in the West Wing again in the, in the Trump administration. And I know the mayor just got the final tranche of funding in the Biden administration for the federal courthouse. So it took us 12 years, give or take, to get $250 million. I know we worked on the WAVE project, that was a $100 million project that I think was somewhere in the 10 to 15-year timeframe. I, I know we also, I remember visiting with Senator Nelson and Senator Rubio and so forth, and many of our representatives up there, to get our full congressional delegation supporting the port dredging and all these other projects. Every one of these took in excess of a decade to get through. So when we say that there's a three-year funding availability, help me understand that, because that's different than what we've gone through traditionally and trying to get money out of DC.
Yeah, and it's different from the courthouse program. So let, well, let me just ret, touch on a couple of points. I, I do think to be able, just to clarify, so that I'm on the record as being accurate, to be able to apply for a grant, you're going to have to demonstrate that you have continuing control over the asset that you're getting a grant for. So some type of an agreement would have to be in place for the city to be able to get grants. So that, that would have to be, whether it's the city that applies, or the county, or some other, or, or, or Brightline or FEC, that whoever is applying for a grant to construct something is going to have to make grant representations that they're going to maintain the asset in the way that it's, you know, for the purpose they receive for the grant. So, so the city could apply for a grant, but that would all have to be worked out, and that's, was beyond my scope of my, my, my assignment. So, but to answer your, your question, Commissioner, the distinction is that for the courthouse program, there was a certain amount of money that was appropriated every year for courthouses. And there was a, you know, a process for ranking courthouses and providing the money. In this case, with this infrastructure law, there are these new programs, and there's funding every year, and the funding is guaranteed for the next three years. Now, after the next three years, there's going to be another transportation law, but who knows whether they'll, obviously whether they'll keep these funding at these levels. For the, so for the next three years, somebody is going to get, some projects are going to get funding, let's say for the intercity passenger rail program. So if this project applied, and, and, and there was, you know, enough consensus and you were able to submit an application that met the criteria, you could conceivably get a significant chunk of funding in the next three years. Now, would you still have to go through NEPA and all of that? Yes, right? And that's, that is an issue that would have to be dealt with. But you do have the potential to get funding quickly because of these, these particular grant programs.
So that is an agency-dependent decision that does not require congressional action at this point?
It does not require congressional action because that funding was, you know, was, was essentially guaranteed, which made it really unique now. Congress each, now, who knows if this will happen this year, but in the past few years, Congress has bolstered those programs even above the guaranteed level. We don't know whether they'll do that again, but we do know that those levels that I mentioned in my presentation are the guaranteed levels. So for the next three years, there will definitely be that money that's available. And then the question is just, do you submit a competitive application, right? And whether by you, I'm, I'm not, I'm saying you loosely, whether it's the city, the county, Brightline, some, you could put together a, you know, a joint, a, you know, do it as a, as a coalition, right? I mean, but, but to be able to submit an application for the tunnel, you have this opportunity in the next three years.
And then i- if you happen to know off the top of your head, what is the totality of funding that is available? Because if we're going for competitive funding, and let's just use, you know, order of magnitude kind of questions, we're talking $2 billion plus or minus 500 million. I'm just going to use that just for everybody's edification as a starting point, because it's always been my experience through the years that everything costs at least three times as much and takes four times as long. I've never seen a project, you know, going back to the building of the pyramids, that hasn't. And so I know from every study that I've ever seen that relates to public works, building projects, they are always undersold as a way to get, you know, community approval and, and government support, and then the actuality of it turns out to be far different. And so whether you're talking the big dig or anything else, going back to the Tweed courthouse, I don't care, same thing. So I'm going to use 2.5 to 3 billion as a starting point, assuming it'll come in at 6 to 9. Let's not even talk about the train out in California, which went from, what, 10 billion to?
But John, don't forget, don't forget the tunnel in Miami. It started out at 3 and came in at 1.2.
And I love FDOT for it, God bless. But, but no, so, so my question is, what is the, what is the amount of available funding? And then, because when I look at some of these programs, you know, just looking at one here where it talks about 1.4 billion divvied up among 70 projects. So we're getting, you know, 70 million, or 50 million, or 20 million. So how does that help us get to our 3 to 5 billion?
Okay. So if we cut to the chase, and we look at the two programs that have the best opportunities, it's capital investment grants, New Starts Program, and, you know, that, and that's the program that's funding the other, the other segments so far of this commuter rail project, right? And then, and then that, and then the federal state partnership for intercity passenger rail. Those are the programs that have the, the best opportunity. The federal state partnership for intercity passenger rail, I would argue, is conceivably even better because there are a limited number of intercity passenger rail projects right now. California High Speed Rail is one of them. They're probably going to get a big tranche of funding in this current round. They may need additional money, I would expect. But this is, this actually is a separate carve-out because this program also includes the northeast corridor. But there's a separate, like, so that's separated out, and then there's money specifically for projects outside of the northeast corridor. So that is a, is a potential opportunity.
So that's the 4.5 billion in the northeast corridor for fiscal years 22 and 23.
Yeah.
So in your experience, do you see that they typically want to allocate the bulk of that to one project, or do they prefer to spread that around to a multitude? Whenever I've dealt with Congress, they like to spread money around to as many voting members of Congress as they possibly can?
So we don't know the answer to that, because this is the first round that was recently solicited. But, and I don't know what other people, I'll be interested in other people's thoughts who are still speaking.
Can I, can I, I, I'm concerned also, as the Commissioner is, because your numbers, if you add them all up, is not a lot of money. And, and you've got a 1.5 trillion dollar infrastructure bill, right? So earlier this year, I was at an event where I met with several high-level USDOT officials. And one of the gentlemen said, you know, in this last funding cycle, we pushed out, quote, "286 billion dollars out the door." That was his number. 286, not 2.86, 286 billion we pushed out the door. Where did he get that number? And, and from what program would that have come from?
Who did it go to?
It might, so it might.
Well, projects around the country, right?
It might be, so did, was it specific to transportation versus other programs?
He was a USDOT representative.
Okay. So there's, there's a few different things. One, it could be formula dollars, which is...
Speak into your microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. One could be, one could be formula dollars, right? Because most, the, like, 90% of the transportation dollars go to state departments of transportation by, by formula. Remember this, I also did this annually, so when you add it up over three years, it gets to be a little bit bigger number. But then also, there's some other programs that didn't, you know, that for whatever reason weren't, you know, weren't applicable. So I don't know what, where they're getting the 200 billion dollars.
286 billion.
286 billion dollars.
That's the number. And they, so I said, well, we're just, we're just...
Yeah, it could be, that's a good, excellent point. It could be, so there's also the FAA, there's, there's, there's other agencies that have competitive...
Part of that infrastructure bill?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So there's the FAA. Yeah. So, so this was, and, and, you know, I know BDO is going to speak maybe, I don't know whether they've identified other programs.
Why don't we let BDO speak? Because I want, I just wanted to say that, you know, when we spoke to the US Department of Transportation, they did not think that the amounts we were seeking were all that insurmountable. So why don't we let BDO speak on this?
So, Mayor, I'm almost done then, so I just want to follow up on a couple of other things, if I may, before we close out with Susan. So you, you made reference to a multi-year, multi-step process. So if we're a multi-year, multi-step process, one of the concerns that I have is that this project, under various iterations, requires a certain amount of eminent domain that's going to come into play to acquire some of the property we need, either where we do the cut or where we have to start. It has been my experience, and certainly we just had this recently with our police station, that eminent domain tends to add about two years, if not more, to the construction timeline. And that's assuming it goes reasonably well. That's after we settled. That wasn't even going to court on that one. You know, we didn't litigate that one till the final conclusion, we settled. How does that impact this multi-year, multi-step process and this three-year timeline? So if we get approved for funding, but it takes us six years to acquire the property, how does that impact it? Because one of the concerns that I have is we have an election coming up, and latest polls I've read throw this about a 50-50 coin toss, and I don't know that this will continue to be a priority of whatever administration is in. And I follow up on that with, it's also my experience, and you certainly know more about this than I do, that whomever the secretary is, doesn't typically survive one, at one term.
Administration.
They don't, even if, even if the administration makes two terms, the cabinet secretary tends to, you know, seek opportunities elsewhere. So how does that impact this once we kind of get into it, from a timeline, multi-year, multi-step process?
Let me speak, and then I think I'm going to turn it over to, to you on the eminent domain. But the, the multi-step process was referring to the cap, the Transit Capital Investment Grant Program. And if that's, if you are going to go through that process to get a full funding grant agreement, you know, as a new start, that's a multi-year, multi-step process. I, now, that program could go away if the Republicans are in charge of everything and, we have a Republican president. The program has been around for a long time, but that is a program that's a multi-step process and, and would take, would take, you know, time before you would be able to get your, your full funding grant agreement. So the, the, the other competitive grants, again, like I said, they're not multi, a multi-step process, but you are going to have to show for those projects. Again, and I don't know, you may have a thought on this, whether you have to have, you wouldn't have had to have done eminent domain already necessarily, but you, they're going to have to be able to make a determination that it looks like the project is going to be able to go forward. Either there's a path forward on NEPA, path forward in eminent domain, but I don't know whether you have anything to add to that.
Just that you would, you would show the right-of-way acquisition as part of your schedule and how it times, and it doesn't always have to be, I get all the right-of-way, then I start construction. You can hire, you can do the procurement of a contractor, you can do work outside of those areas before you get there. You'll have to show, and this is part of that risk assessment, you have to get through NEPA so that you can define what that right-of-way is. Then you have a right to move forward with the eminent domain, and that's a risk item. Right-of-way is a risk. I, I see you have experience with that, knowing that the time it takes and when you have relocations, the complications it brings. So that's something you really have to look at for any project, is, is the right-of-way impacts, because they, they can be significant. And I know everyone had some concept graphics with trains in a tunnel that are stacked, but you have to unstack them and bring them up the grade at some point, and that creates a lot of space. So it's just recognizing what that space, because those portals can be fairly significant as far as the, the right-of-way impacts. And then what does a underground tunnel under a property, what, how does that impact the property from a value standpoint and so forth?
All right. Last question too now. So if we do get some, some funding to start this process, as we said, if we have to come back, you know, annually for additional bites at the apple, I'm hoping that there's a preference for projects that are already underway in terms of, you know, subsequent levels of grant funding availability. Is that typically the case?
It depends on the program. So the, the New Starts Capital Investment Grant Program, you get a, you get a full funding grant agreement, which is essentially a contract subject to appropriations. And so those have been very reliable to the point where projects bond against them because there's a commitment to fund it annually. You know, and, and so it depends on the program. I believe for the federal state partnership, that they also can do multi-year, and MEGA can do multi-year. Some of the other programs, like, you know, for example, the, the RACE program or the infra, infra program, the intent for those programs are CHRISI, the intent is that they're one year that you can get your project completed with the tranche of whatever the amount of funding is. So it just depends on, on the program.
Sure. And I just want to point out something, a fact that I think was mentioned, but I think was, was maybe not understood by everybody. But Susan said that a lot of this funding from the federal government has now been sent to the state, state departments, the FDOT and so forth, for, for local grant funding. So while it may have been originally allocated and appropriated at the federal level, a lot of that money has now been transferred to the states for, for future disbursement. Okay, Mr. Rogers.
Yes, our, our last presenter is BDO, and then I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Hi, Tom John with the BDO team. I'll kick off and then hand off to my colleagues, Nosari Numar. You've heard a lot of information today. You've heard a lot of different approaches to things. You've heard a lot of, there could be a route that's a bridge, there are multiple bridge routes, there are multiple bridge heights, there are multiple tunnel types. There's a lot of different grants that are involved in this. And you've taken in a lot of information, and I credit you for putting the effort in to do this. One side note, that as you synthesize this, I do highly recommend the book mentioned, How to Get Big Things Done. We actually, there is a public-private partnership certification program that I teach. We give it to everybody that goes through the program to look at. So I would actually, to the extent you have time, recommend that you and anybody else interested in the projects do it, because it is good intel into where things go wrong and where those go right, and how they get there and what happens. So you've got all this information, you've got years of there. The one thing I think that I take from this, and if anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, is we do need a new river crossing. We have a bridge that was built for a handful of freight trains, and there are going to be a lot more trains going across that bridge, and it probably doesn't sustain for the future of your community, whatever that may be. Now, we have a lot of different approaches here as to what that will be. Is it a bridge? Is it a tunnel? Is it a tunnel? How much, how far does that take? How much land has to be acquired? Who does the land have to be acquired from? Have the stakeholders been involved? For example, and, and so the point of the BDO team is, I'm not going to give you any information, I don't have a report right now, because we've been brought in to help you synthesize all of this data, to help you think about maybe what questions either you have that haven't been answered, or questions maybe that need to be filled in or backfilled through the process, to help you get to a decision point. Do you submit for a federal grant? What kind of partnerships do you need with the county, with FDOT, with the federal government? These are all things that obviously you have, and obviously I can hear Commissioner Herbst is looking very deeply at a lot of these issues, trying to sort through it. They're weighty issues, and you're making decisions going to impact your community for decades, if not over 100 years. So this is all important, and this is why we've come in. But for example, in our scope, we plan to, and are actually undertaking, looking at these actual estimates that have been made. You heard that they're high-level, they're top-down. These are estimates that are done just to get the bird's-eye view of whether a project's possible. Nobody has said that they're the actual numbers, nor will they be. But we're going to help you begin to drill down into that. We're going to liaise with everybody that's been involved here and work with them, because you've put good money and lots of effort into ascertaining what kind of projects you're going to have. We should not reinvent the wheel to the extent that we can use that information. But there's more to be done. Obviously, we want to work closely with Susan. She's given you great information, and I think you're going to hear from Umar additional insights into Build America and other places. Our hope is to come to you with an actionable plan for a crossing, so that you can move forward and make a decision, and whether it's a bridge, whether it's a tunnel, whatever the case may be. Is it one where you're the project lead? Is it one where the county's the project lead? But the point is, it does seem, and I think everybody and the amount of effort being put into this, that there needs to be a crossing. And you need the information that helps you be armed to figure out what that crossing is. So with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Umar.
Thank you, everyone. A few things, I think Susan covered a lot of areas in terms of funding. I just want to give you an overview, a little bit about IIJA. So rail infrastructure specifically, under Biden administration, IIJA, which is a funding plan starting from '22 to '26, was $66 billion dedicated only for the rail infrastructure. Out of that, $66 billion, $36 billion have been allocated to Northeast Corridor, and $30 billion remain unallocated. However, that money is being reallocated to Department of Transportation, among other different pockets of money. And that total pocket of money, which is, we believe, as allocated only specifically for rail infrastructure project, is approximately 70-odd billion dollars, which, which you can be eligible for. Some of the names I would like to share is Section 130 program enhancements, Rail and Multi-Load Model Discretionary, CRISI, the Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvement Programs, INFRA, RACE. And interestingly, you would also see IRA, which is infrastructure which was subsequently issued to Department of Energy, which was around $330 billion odd funding, also has emission control funding as well, which was, which is around $21 billion. And if you play smartly, you might be eligible for that as well. So all in all, I think only $70 billion is available, total $70 billion is available for, focused only on the rail infrastructure. Now, out of this, how is this 70-odd billion dollars, when we say that number is huge? It is being distributed on a year-on-year basis. Total allocation has to be happened between now and 2026. What we did see in 2023 is multi-year funding programs have came up. U.S. Department of Transportation came up with multi-year programs, which effectively mean they were allocating money for 2023, 2024, 2025 as well. And what we are also expecting, based on our different projects that we work with, based on our conversations with them, they might want to utilize or allocate all the money in next year, in 2024, for some of the programs that they believe. So this may be a move by them to aggressively allocate funding on certain programs, which they are concerned that they may not be available after 2025, depending on whatever the results have, are there for, after November. But we believe it might be a great opportunity to apply for these funding programs. Now, we also, having worked with Build America Bureau, which is an arm of U.S. Department of Transportation, I've been their consultant as well, on, worked with them on California High-Speed Rail, and also worked with them on Gilkey's Expressway Project as well. I spoke with some of the colleagues there, and interestingly, they showed very keen interest to support this project. RIA grant, Regional Infrastructure Accelerator, is part of that. I think through efforts of Susan and the city manager and mayor, this grant was allocated as an exceptional from the regular, because this is a project-focused grant, whereas all the other allocations done under RIA are for general capacity building, capacity building accelerator program for different cities, counties, or state DOTs or state departments. So this is an exceptional support that Build America Bureau have shown. Build America Bureau has also shown keen interest to finance a project and support the project. From our understanding, and two funding platforms, funding opportunities, as Susan has also identified those, one is CRISI, which is Consolidated Rail Infrastructure, which not only this project will be eligible for it. For next year, you typically, CRISI has a billion-dollar in allocation, which is sort of a standard. For next year, that, for last year, that allocation, the CRISI, was enhanced as a result of, as a result of IIJ, and that money was around $3.3 billion in total, roughly, I believe. And this next year, we anticipate it to cross somewhere around $1.4 to $1.5 billion. Now, CRISI is critical because it's divided into multiple different areas, but it may be eligible for technical grants as well. Another area to look at, which is the most eligible, as Susan has also mentioned, and I totally agree with her, is apart from the Northeast Corridor and California High-Speed Road, there are no intercity rail infrastructure projects to such an extent as, or as developed as this corridor is. While Brightline has received last year some funding from that, we believe that this project, even the sheer size of it, can also be eligible for that. Next year, that eligibility for funding would be around $7.2 billion. This funding comes in large chunks, and it might also so happen that they might allocate funding for two subsequent years as well. So they might see funding allocation for 2024 and 2025 as well, which means larger pot as well. But because of lack of competition, this might be an ideal opportunity to apply. In terms of whether the city can apply, yes, the city can apply for funding, city has eligibility to apply for funding, city can receive funding grant for projects of similar nature. But then, once again, who owns the project, how it works out, that's obviously not my prerogative. But, but yes, city is 100% eligible to apply for the funding, city is 100% eligible for apply for the financing. One interesting note I would like to share on the funding and financing part is, each of these funding opportunities from federal U.S. Department of Transportation comes with a matching principle. And if you raise money under the new guidelines, which has just come in this year, from FRA, which is a loan program under Build America Bureau, which allocate, which can allocate 100% of the project cost, up to 75 years, any, any financing under RIF program can actually, actually be eligible for matching the grant program as well, which is a huge change in Department of Transportation's protocols. Previously, state, cities, counties had to do the matching from their own sources. Now you do not. You can borrow that from RIF programs. So as of right now, I think our goal is to identify all those funding opportunities and, and whatever those available opportunities are. One area is also to look at how you structure the project. It has a huge impact, in my experience, as to how the project is structured, what risk you are willing to take as a project owner, or whoever the project owner is, and how that risk can be transferred. At the end of the day, it is not the city or the county which is, which will be doing the construction of the project. It will be an experienced developer who would be coming in and doing the design and build. But how we structure the project reduces the risk of the project as well. So I think that's also one thing that we, when we go for application of the funding, I think this is a question which will be asked from us, as how are you funding the whole project, who is going to deal the project, how it's, it's structured at least, even if you don't have the procurement done as, as of right now. And one last item I would like to also share is, in terms of eminent domain, I worked on a project a couple of years ago, and, and it was a bridge, a project. And a few things to, to just share with you, nothing going against it, or, I think we, we saw one of the biggest challenges in that project related to the utilities underneath. And because when you, when I was discussing it with my colleagues, I was discussing how do you dig deep, how deep, deep do you dig? And I think that's something, which is something we do not know of and unaware of, what, what, what sort of utilities are running under FRA, FECRs right-of-way. So right-of-way sort of creates that, and that's why we are here. We are here to define what the project would be, and there is no, what that project definition could be. So handing it over to Nasri.
Just one question on that. So you're talking about completing all this work. What is your timeframe, by the way, for having a report for us?
So we are, we are targeting an initial draft, which would come out in December, but I think which is a very limited scope. But what we are also discussing is to do detailed work, which would be targeting somewhere on February, March, right, to prepare the city for, prior to the application deadlines.
So, and, and Mayor, this is kind of a global question here. So I understand now, from our previous conversation, that we're talking about trying to have a joint meeting with the county on December 5th. So we're not going to have anything available for the county for that meeting. So I'm not sure, maybe I'm missing something, but how productive is it going to be for us to have a meeting with the county when we're not going to have the results of the study that we're looking at? Just an open question.
Good question, but I don't think the county has really agreed to a date yet. So you want to help, you want to help us out?
Because I've got December 5th on my calendar. This is like the third date I've got on my calendar.
So do I. Mayor, I have December 5th on my calendar as well.
This is why I use an eraser now, okay? Because I have to keep erasing it. I don't put anything in a pen anymore.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Okay, guys, stop. Let's have an update from the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, as, as the city, the county requested a meeting, and they would like to meet December 5th, we asked you all, and you all are available December 5th. Their meeting is being proposed for 1:00 p.m., and so wanted to know if that is something that you all would like to do for 1:00 p.m. And typically, we have our conference meetings starting at 1:30, so that would mean that you would have to start that conference meeting late.
Okay, that's fine. But I, so the county commission has agreed to meet on December 5th.
They have requested.
So Mayor, we, you said we have a representative from the county here. Could I ask him just to come to the podium for one second? Because I want to understand what we hope to accomplish at that meeting if we're not going to be done with our studies. So I just, I just want to understand what the county's expectation is from the city and what our expectation of that meeting is going to be, because I, I need to understand that.
Is Mr. Kellner here?
Yeah.
Can you please push that button by your, by your microphone?
Good afternoon.
Great, thank you.
Thank, thank you so much for being here. So, so yes, again, I want to understand what the county's expectations are from the city at this point. I know we've had several attempts recently to try and get together to formulate a partnership going forward. And I'm all about partnership and collaboration. So I want to understand from my partners at the county, what your goals and expectations are for this next meeting and for the next 30, 60, 90 days, how that may tie in to the studies and the work that we're doing. So just, if you could educate me, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly, thank you. And in order to educate, to go back, the county and the city agreed to have a joint study on the New River Crossing that was going to go over a lot of the stuff that you heard here today. We went through the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO, and we received a consultant from them, that was the White House group. So they've done, they did an exhaustive study. They, the report was finished in, in August. We tried unsuccessfully to schedule a meeting in October, because the county, because the city had indicated it wasn't ready to meet. So the county went ahead and, and met and, and got a briefing from the White House group that I'm, I'm sure you're all aware of. Since that time, you had a meeting on December, not December, on November 7th. And, and the White House group was here, but unfortunately, I think you guys ran out of time, so you couldn't hear from them. There was the ask to have the county come and do a joint meeting, so we were talking about a joint meeting again. Unfortunately, the schedules couldn't line up, and, you know, I advised the city after the, the 7th that they couldn't meet that. And I, and I put out the December 5th date, because the county commission was already meeting on that date for another workshop in the afternoon. And once we got confirmation yesterday that you were available, I did, we have reached out, and we do have a majority of the commissioners. We haven't heard back from all the commissioners yet, but we do have a majority of them that are available for December 5th in the afternoon. But the intent of that is to have the White House group, which I don't believe this city commission has received their, their presentation or briefing on from yet, and again, that is the, that's the, that's the consultants that we jointly agreed to have go through. A lot of the information that we're talked about here today. And so we'd be, have them do a presentation and have both, have both commissions hear it at the same time and have, have a fruitful discussion.
So, so within that, so presuming that, that we, you know, we have enough folks here from the county, and, and all the city commissioners are here, and we've got a quorum of each, and we can move forward and have that presentation, that'll be one more layer of, of additional information, which, again, I think on a project of this, of this complexity and magnitude is, is a wonderful idea. Where are we in terms of a timeline for needing to make a decision? Because as Susan pointed out, you know, we need to start looking at some of these deadlines for applying for funding. Again, when do we need to conclude this by? I, I like to start with the end in mind, as they say. So tell me when I need to make a decision, what is that tied to? And then let's work our way back from that. So just give me a sense of what I'm working on from a time.
All right. So, so Mr. Kellner, before you respond, let me just, let's just talk about it from our perspective. So the U.S. Department of Transportation gave us a grant of almost $1 million to do a study, which, which we need to get done. We haven't, we haven't begun getting it done yet. We probably need to waive the normal procurement procedure in order to be able to assign this to a contractor, to be able to get this thing done in anticipation of the February window for applying for the next round of funding.
So that's our date, February?
February.
So we have to have a decision date certain by February?
Correct.
Come hell or high water, February?
Correct.
It's go, no-go?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so assuming we can do that today, we should have all of our ducks lined in a row by, by February, according to Umar and Nasri, who have spoken, well, Mr.?
Wait, because I'm sorry, because I thought you said March, unless I missed you, right? I, I thought I heard March.
No, she said March, but I've heard February over and over again.
No, 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 I'm sorry. I thought I heard March for completion of your report. You said you will be working on it, you said you have preliminary draft, and then you said February, March for the final report. Okay. So understanding the, the mayor's point now, that, that we need to make a decision by February, we're certainly going to need your final draft by January. I I think February, March is too late if we need to make a decision in February. So I'm just putting that out there. I want everybody to be on the same page here, guys. Again, start with the end in mind and work our way back.
So the no-go comes out expected, anticipated, end of February or start of March, and the application deadline would be April, start or end of March. So we're working on those timelines.
Right, but we kind of need to know what we're going to do before we start the grant application. So sooner rather than later, because I don't want Ben and city staff scrambling to put together, and then, and I can tell you, having been through this before, when you're scrambling at the last minute, I promise you, you've made mistakes. It's wrong, okay? There's errors throughout. It's riddled with inconsistencies and errors when you're scrambling at the last minute. No takeaway from staff. I've been through this before, and I know this is the outcome. So sooner rather than later, I don't want to be under an artificial time pressure for staff to get work done. If I'm going to push anybody, I'm going to push you guys, because you're consultants, and consultants are hired to be fired. That's why I used to be a consultant. I know how this works. So we'll push you so that my staff has a little bit more leeway. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
But that doesn't answer our question, though.
No, yeah.
That answers just part of the question.
That's just part of it, yeah.
Right. So part of the question, so the part with regard to our having our application ready for that funding cycle next February, March is one issue. So you're saying we'll be prepared for that, correct?
So Mayor, if I can interject real quick.
Who's talking? Oh, yes.
So the work order that we have--
You're not allowed to talk, Ben, I'm sorry.
The work order that we have with BDO now will give us a preliminary deliverable in December, and that will be able to get feedback from the commission. To be able to take it from that preliminary point to what we'll call, you know, an application-ready, there's going to be another scope of work that has to be done. And to your point, timeliness is going to be a challenge, so we'll need to figure out what those next steps are.
But we're going to need to sit back down. So we're meeting with the county in December, and we're going to explore the conclusions and the text of the White House group. That's great. And then we go into the holidays, and I can tell you, again, all my years of doing this, absolutely nothing is going to happen from December 5th until January 5th. If it does, I'll be shocked. It'll be the first time. So we're going to get back together in January, and we've got to sit down with the county in January, and we've got to make a decision as to what we're going to do. Or we sit down with the county in February and we make a decision, because again, as I'm hearing this discussion, they are the primary lead on this entire project, not us. So we're kind of the tail wagging the dog right now, if I understand this correctly. So the county is going to be the one that is driving most of this, particularly if there's going to be any bonding that needs to be done. So that means we all need to be on board with the timeline that we sit down with the county in December, we get your report hopefully in January, we sit back down with the county again in February, and we have our kumbaya moment where we all agree on a path forward so that we can start applying for money in February, March. Does that make sense to everybody? Am I, is this the right timeline? Is everybody in general agreement with what I'm saying? And is that feasible?
Well, let's just back up for a second.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure it's going to be completely constructive to just have the report from the White House group when there are other reports that we should be addressing that speak to the same issue but come up with different conclusions. Let me give you an example. I think Nasri is going to speak to us, I'm not sure, but I know, for example, that there are proposals to do tunnels that are much shorter than the three-and-a-half-mile tunnel that the White House group has opined on, to do a tunnel that's, you know, less than a quarter of a mile.
Okay.
All right. So I hate to make a decision on just what one consultant has, basically, the White House group just went back and looked at FDOT's numbers and said, "Yeah, they're right."
Okay.
I mean, they really didn't do anything other than that. And so to really, for this commission, and both commissions, to benefit from the information that we need to make a determination at what is the best approach to doing the New River Crossing, I think that, you know, FDOT did three studies on bridges and only one study on a tunnel, when there are actually three studies on the tunnel that, and only one of them has been addressed. So I think we're denying ourselves the opportunity if we're rushing to having a joint meeting. I mean, the joint meeting is great if it's just to rehash, I mean, the county's already heard the White House group.
Okay.
So they don't really even need to be there.
So then what are we having a--
So what are we having a December 5th meeting?
What are we having a joint meeting for then?
Right, at this point.
And then to carry that one step further, Mayor, so if I've got White House group's report, and I've got a different opinion about whether that is optimal, I'll use that word, I don't want to use anything pejorative, how do we arm wrestle that out? I mean, you know, tell me what our approach is to go back and forth, because somebody's got to make a decision.
Right.
Okay?
Which is, which we're part of that.
Right. So we've got to make a, well, we have to at least, we have to at least up here agree on what we think the best path forward is, and then we have to negotiate with the county if we're not on the same page. But let's assume for argument's sake we are on the same page, but we still need to come to a conclusion as to how we're going to do this. So I want to know when we are, when are we going to do that?
Okay, well--
What meeting is that at, Mayor?
That's a good question, but let's step back for a second. I would like to think that the city of Fort Lauderdale is part of that decision.
Absolutely.
Right. But a number of days ago, the county administrator wrote an op-ed piece in the newspaper and said that we're not part of the decision, that it's a county decision, the county owns the project, and the county is going to be the one moving this project forward over the New River. It was very disappointing to hear that, because I thought we were still in the process of trying to work together to partner in our approach to what is the best solution for crossing the New River. And unfortunately, when I read that, I was, I realized that the rug had been pulled out from under us, and are we just, are we just having conversations amongst ourselves when the conclusions are not going to have any impact on the decisions of the county?
Well, I'm assuming, I'm assuming good faith on everybody's part in that we are still in a constructive dialogue.
I'd like to think that, too.
I have absolute, absolute faith on our partners, everybody involved, that we're still in that posture. But I want to get back then to the question of timelines and process. So if we are going to have to come to a conclusion, so again, starting with the end in mind, February is our end date. We need to basically have a final wrap-up meeting with the county in, say, January--
Right.
--in order to approve something, to move forward in February. Hopefully, we'll have the report from BDO by then. So we'll have all the information in front of us to make a decision in January so that we can begin the process in February. So that means we have to make it, we have to, as, you know, they always say, we've got to, it's kind of fish or cut bait. So we have to figure out when that date is that we have to make that decision by. I need to know what we're working towards, because I can't operate in an environment where we keep saying we're going to study it, we're going to study it, we're going to study it. We can study things to death. At a certain point in time, we just have to pull the trigger and live with the decision that we make. And I just want to know what that date is. When do we think that is?
Okay, so, Umar, you'd indicated that your preliminary analysis is not going to be ready until sometime in December, and somehow we had come up with a December 5th date, which is only two weeks away. So that's not going to really be possible for you to come back with anything substantive, correct?
Yeah, our initial engagement is related to defining the project.
Can you please speak into the microphone?
Yes. Our initial engagement is related to defining the project and identifying the funding opportunities. We can probably push ourselves, Nasri. Yeah? It doesn't look easy.
No, they, I'm sorry to say, but December 5th, to come up to make a decision, it is very premature, in my opinion. And the reason for that, and this is part of my discussion, is the project is not well-defined yet. We don't know where does it start? We don't know where does it end? We don't know how deep does it go? We don't know what are the slopes that are going to go? All of these issues need to be addressed. Which properties are going to, they're going to impact? Because you cannot wish any facility in place. And what I have seen so far, a lot of the studies that were done sort like, this is the final product, but we have to go from step one to the end and assess all the aspects. Yes, eventually, we're going to get there, and there is, and sorry to say that, but there is always a lot of pressure from the public to the politicians is what's going to cost. And we cannot take, especially for tunnel construction, we cannot take it, what is the cost per mile, or what is the cost per linear foot? I'll give you an example. I work with Professor Eric Goldwyn of New York University, who studied over, I think, 1,200 projects for transit, and they came up with an average and the median price per foot. The average was $74,000 per foot. That's for two tracks and stations. And the median was $54,000 per foot.
All right, let me get out my calculator here.
What he's saying is they vary wildly.
No kidding.
That's a short summary on that one.
That's right.
So then, if I may, let me interrupt you then, because I think this gets to my point, and I want to hear further what you have to say, but I want to get, I want to try and introduce a note of pragmatic reality into this conversation then. So as a gentleman once said, we have our known unknowns, and we have our unknown unknowns. And that's all a big part of what you're trying to do. And I understand the position that you're in. If we can't even define the project for you, you certainly can't go out and price it out for you. So you're dealing with all the unknown unknowns at this point. So I'm going to go out on a limb here and say, there's no way we're going to be ready to make a decision by February. And I'm just putting that out there, so.
Well, I don't, that's not the question or statement we want to hear right now. Right now, we want to hear from our, well, you know, we don't, we don't know what we don't know yet. So how can we, how can we make a statement like that?
It's good, because it's going to take them two months to figure out what it is they don't know to come back with a report, to sit down and negotiate on what we're going to do to move forward. There is no way, Mayor, that I see us coming to a conclusion and a consensus with our other partners by February. I've done this too many times to, I am, look, you've got optimists, you've got pessimists, and you've got realists. I'm a realist.
So what is, so what is the conclusion, then?
The conclusion is I don't think we're going to be ready for this next funding cycle in February. I simply don't see any way forward for us to meet that deadline, and--
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what. Let's first hear from Mr., let's first hear from Nasri, and then we can go from there. Mr. Keller, you can, if you don't mind, sit down. I don't mean to keep you standing.
Well, but if I could add, though, here, the county has been a willing partner in this, and we have worked with the city. That's how we came up with the joint study, and we went through the joint study process, you know, and that's why, you know, the whole trying to get the joint workshop to get both parties here. Unfortunately, we couldn't do it in October, which was our plan originally, but that's what the whole purpose of the December date is here, too. And to the comments made here on the op-ed piece, you know, and as was stated here on the board, the county, the county is the project owner, and we're the ones currently in negotiations with Bright Life of the Access Agreement. We're going to have the continuing control. It is a, it is a project that goes from one end of the county to the end of the county. So that, you know, the op-ed piece was accurate. We have, and we have worked with the city, we continue to work with the city. We would like to work with the city and go over the report together that covers, we both paid, both the county and the city paid a lot of money for a report to have them present that answers a lot of the questions here. And, you know, unfortunately, the alternatives that you're talking about between bridge and tunnel, you got to start somewhere. That's what defines the project there. But at some point in time, we can analyze this without going forward. But I just want to be very clear on the record that the county has been a willing partner, has been seeking to make sure that the city is on board, and unfortunately, we're still here analyzing the same issue over and over.
Mr. Keller, I just have a question. Is the county in receipt of all of these reports, all of these experts that we're talking with today, all of the backup that we have in front of us today, has all of this information been disseminated to the county commission?
The, for the, for the report here today, the stuff that was attached as agenda item, no.
Okay, well, okay, so Mayor, here's what I'm thinking. I think it's imperative that we meet on December 5th, and we might have to meet a few more times even after December 5th, because I do believe that we are running into some deadlines. But I don't see why or how we can just continue to talk amongst ourselves here in this little vacuum. So I think it's really important that everything that we have in the backup today, everything that we've heard today, that has to be shared with the county. And then we have to begin that dialogue on December 5th. And we might have to schedule a few more meetings between December 5th and February. But it's just not going to do us any good if we don't begin to lay out our case to the county, try to show them what we believe and why, and that's going to take some education. But they need to see all of this information that we have in the backup today. And then hopefully, we will at least maybe have some point in time in December, if we schedule another meeting, that draft from, you know, BDO to share that with them as well. But I think it's important that we meet on December 5th, and we set up a schedule on December 5th for subsequent meetings between December 5th and whatever point in time in February we're talking about in terms of deadlines for grant submissions, things like that. But we have got to start having these face-to-face meetings and conversations with the county. Just doing this with ourselves, it's not accomplishing anything.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I find myself 100% agreeing with my colleague to the left of me over here, Steve. We need to, we need to, no, don't be shocked. Well, all your colleagues are to your left, I just-- No, but the one next to me, but Steve, Steve over here. I mean, we have to, the first, the longer you delay the first step, the longer you delay the outcome. Number one, I think we absolutely have to meet December 5th. Number two, if we have to have several meetings, so be it. Number three, Brian, MPO, I'd love, I think you need to be at that if you're available. Would you be able to? Yes, that's a thumbs up. So, Mr. Keller, if you could, no, if we decide that, please disloop MPO in with everything that we do. I think we absolutely need to meet on December 5th.
Yeah, I apologize. I, when I mentioned about what's going to happen at the December 5th meeting, MPO would be involved in that as well, too. In fact, they may have a role in facilitating that meeting to try to get to a resolution.
Okay, so that will continue forward. Let us wrap up our meeting today. Nasri, would you please begin with your presentation?
As I, as I was saying, it's important for us to define what is the project? Where does it start? Where does it finish? We always looked at the alignment and the configuration is south of Davie and north of Sunrise. Is that the intent of the project?
So, so did you see the, did you see the White House report?
I've seen the White House report.
They came up with a, they said that if it landed right below Sunrise, it says tunnel limits extend from south of Sunrise Boulevard to southwest 15th Street, three and a quarter miles. It's not three and a quarter miles, that distance. It's not even two.
Mayor, we, our initial investigation right now, we look at it, if we intend to cross only the New River, okay?
Right.
And if we looked at properties that we can, public properties, that we can divert the existing track to be able to go down under, we're talking about one mile.
One mile?
One mile.
Okay.
Okay. So we are not talking about three miles, not about three and a half miles, okay?
Okay.
So that is, that is, you know--
So let's use that as a scope. Let's use that as a scope.
Okay.
Okay? Begin, all right.
Okay. And that we can, we can develop that concept, that approach. The cross street, underpassing, for example, underpasses for the cross street can be accommodated, can be done, and those could be outside the project itself.
Correct, correct.
It could be funded--
Does everybody understand what he just said? Are you listening?
Yes, we need, we need more money for Cypress Creek, Commercial Boulevard, Oakland Park Boulevard. Yeah, we need, we need more money so we can go under.
Not all of them.
But John, but John, no, seriously.
No, no, I believe that's what you said, right? We need the underpasses later on.
Right. So, but the underpasses come from a completely different funding source, and this is being proposed by MPO and--
Yes.
--and the White House group-- And this has been proposed by MPO and the White House group as a complement to the type of tunnel structure that we've been talking about, right?
Right. Now, what I'm saying, that the major street, cross street, you want to have great separation, and they can be underpasses. The side street or small street, you can still have the at-grade crossing with the proper safety precautions and all of that. So that is actually, I was looking for decisions like that. This is a decision, okay? And I appreciate that.
Okay.
The other aspect, for example, is how many car that train is gonna be. Because that is gonna determine the length of the platform of the station. Is it a thousand feet long station or 500-foot station? Again, that is...
Is that determined by ridership or anticipated ridership?
Absolutely.
So, has anybody gotten any estimates from, I don't even know. I know years ago when we started this, it was the Coastal Link. I don't know what we're calling it these days, but going back a decade ago was the Coastal Link. So whatever it may be, and I don't, well, another part of that, too, is I know there's been various proposed operators of it. So Tri-Rail had expressed an interest in running it. There was discussion of Bright Line running it. There was discussion of a third-party governmental entity being established to operate it. So...
All right, that's a whole other issue.
Well, but no, I think it gets into his question, though, of who's going to make a determination as to what the anticipated ridership is. Because from the ridership flows the size of the train, from the size of the train flows the size of the station, so forth and so on. So every one of these things is predicated upon that first decision. We've got to get to question zero.
And that is, and that is the study which I have not seen. I don't know if it was done by FDOT or not, what is the ridership?
I think Bright Line has done that study, and I think that might be available to us.
Okay. So that is some of the issues that need to be addressed.
Okay.
Other issues are the vehicle size, that we can also assume, some certain thing from other project and so on. But one of the major aspects in underground construction is, and you heard it probably the first time from my two colleagues, is the geotechnical conditions. We do not anticipate to do any borings or any investigation at this time, but there are a lot of historical data that we can use. And the geology is not as bad as it is in Port of Miami, which I worked on, Port of Miami project. And by the way, one of the projects that came under budget. So the geotechnical assessment is very critical. All of these would lead to the bottom-up estimate of the construction cost. The bottom-up estimate is like what contractors do. And that is estimate, what is their productivity rate? Because tunneling is a linear operation. What is the material that they're gonna use? What is the equipment they're gonna use? What are the consumable they're gonna use? And the final finishing work that they need to do. We don't do an estimate of tunnel by using dollar per linear foot or dollar per mile. If we look at the dollar per mile and we look at the studies that were done, we're talking about, for a mile tunnel, we're talking about $400 million construction cost. Yeah. Then, then all of a sudden, the numbers start escalating significantly. You know, so other aspect of it is the stakeholders. We know that there are multiple stakeholders in that. But one always question that I always ask myself, and I did not hear it so far, is what do the public want? Did anybody have a public meeting?
Well, you're gonna hear from the public shortly.
It's very important, because I've been in project in which the public insisted on putting things underground. And that is San Francisco Central Subway a few years back. And they were in, I attended public meetings that they were standing room only. So this is something, because whether we fund, get the money from the feds, local money, private money, and all of that, at the end of the day, they are the taxpayer who are paying for that. So we need to satisfy them. Other aspect is social aspect associated with it. What does it do having an elevated structure versus underground structure? What does it do to the economical situation? What does it do to the connectivity of the community? And the improvement, life improvement of the people? The noise and vibration, the air quality, aesthetic? All of these come into play. And always project like that, as Dr. Mooney, my colleague here, said, you got to look at it at the lifecycle cost. For the same life of 150 years, you got to build two bridges. Okay? So this is something need to be considered. And one final note, and I wish I had that, looking at the numbers that I have seen, there is about $500 million in engineering and construction management. I'll do it for half price. But, I mean, these are, those are, somebody put percentages. Construction cost is $2 billion as a percentage of that, 20% or whatever it is, it comes out to be $500 million. And these are the type of things, the sanity check, which I call them, that we have to step back and say, is this reasonable? Are these numbers are reasonable? And I think the answer to those so far, need a little bit more to digest them and come up with a reasonable number.
Are you referring to the White House group report?
Yes, sir.
So you feel, you're saying a light item, that particular line item you don't think is accurate? You think it's quite a bit more than it should be?
As I said, I wish I had that number.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor.
Who's talking? Yes?
So I think you've mentioned something that is very instrumental in driving this report down to its definition. What you just mentioned about defining the scope to be crossing the river and sticking to that, I think that could give us a very good comparable. And also, it would help us meet the timelines that are very pressing before us. If that is a decision of the commission, these individuals, these experts can focus on that, and that can narrow down the time of the results of the studies that they will propose to you all.
Well, if, if, if in fact, a one-mile tunnel would adequately provide for the gradient and the, you know, the appropriate operation of the train, and I understand that that would even permit the existing Bright Line station to remain untouched, that coupled with the undergrounding that the county proposed a while back, is something that I think is far more palatable than, and certainly the cost would come down significantly as compared to the three-and-a-half-mile estimate that the White House group proposed. You know, the combination of those ideas certainly would bring us closer between the county and the city's concept here. Because keeping in mind, as Nasri has said, you know, there are other issues, you know, we're gonna hear today from, you know, the Historical Society, who's going to find themselves with a wall in front of all their historic buildings if a bridge is built. We're gonna hear from those in the Downtown Development Authority, who are gonna say that Himerchi Street is gonna be completely cut off from the rest of the city if a bridge is built. You're gonna hear things like that. And a one-mile tunnel will certainly accommodate a lot of what we're all looking to accomplish, which is a cost-effective approach to trying to cross the new river. So, so why don't we, first of all, gentlemen and ladies, Susan, everybody, thank you so much for being here today. You've brought us much closer to where we need to be. Can we get a consensus about what I said earlier, about the procurement process? If we can waive that so that BDO can move forward quickly and get this project done for us? Is that okay with everybody? All right. So let's do that. And then, and then you do what you have to do.
So wait, Mayor, just from a procedural point. So you want to bring back a, basically a waiving of the procurement code in the best interests of the city? That would be the procedure, typically the one under which we've done that. So we waived the procurement code in the best interest of the, so that's got to come back as an agenda item. We have to have a resolution declaring that and moving forward. So is that what you're proposing?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Can we have that tonight?
As a walk-on?
We need to have that tonight as a walk-on.
We can work on that.
And Mayor, I would also request that the city manager get to the county ASAP a copy of the video of this agenda item with all of this discussion for the last several hours, as well as all of the backup that we have been provided prior to today's meeting. Thank you.
We can do that.
Are you gonna be able to come to this December 5th meeting?
Of course, if you will.
Okay.
December in Fort Lauderdale is ideal.
Not a bad gig.
Mr. Mayor, we will have it at the Joint City-County, City Hall. We don't have a joint city-canyons. Mr., Mr., I know that was...
Are you being facetious?
I'm being, look, I'm being nice to my neighbor over here, so. I have a comment that I've been waiting for a while.
Wait, 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 before we do that, we have to finish with the question, answering the question. Wait, okay, never mind. I thought there was a question pending. There wasn't. Go ahead.
This is something I've been waiting for a while to ask anybody over here. And I'm gonna have Brian come down, if you can.
And we've got several people signed up to speak.
But I just, this is one issue I just want to get started with, and they might want to...
This is Brian Colletta from the MPO.
Correct. Brian, thank you for being here. You were in a meeting with me recently, and we had some people in the business community. Here is the biggest issue that they have. And apparently, and this is a big problem, this might be, but we have to address this. When you're talking about drilling a tunnel underneath, and you were all assuming it's gonna go under the current tracks, it's not gonna go under the current tracks. It's gonna go for several reasons. I mean, Brian, if you could, when I'm done, if you could just verify this. But number one is, there's structural and engineering issues going directly under. And number two, we need Bright Line and FEC's permission to go absolutely under the tracks. And apparently, from what I was told, they said, no, it's gonna have to be offset, and it's gonna have to be, and once the tracks is underneath, you can't build anything on top of that. You can't, any structure that would be over there would have to be condemned for eminent domain. Any businesses would have to be cleared out. And you're gonna end up with a parallel stretch of right-of-way, not over the tracks, but next to it. And there's gonna be land acquisition and eminent domain issues, because it's not gonna be over the tracks, it's gonna be next to it. Brian, could you just, I mean, just maybe comment about what we heard about that?
Honorable Commissioner Brian Colletta-Broward, MPO. I was in that meeting on Saturday, and that was the, basically, the crux of the information that the Jacobs Engineering Firm provided you. That basically, it would be not underneath the tracks, it'd be adjacent to or somewhat further away.
So we're gonna have to do eminent domain in a whole nother quarter here, taking businesses and residential property. And we're talking about not only cost, but time, and this is...
Well, that would be both projects. Would it be a bridge or a tunnel?
No. There's, Brian, if you could come back, there was, not necessarily, Brian. Is that right or not?
Well, it was that there's been no preliminary engineering done, essentially, so you could place it wherever you needed to. But if it was a tunnel, it could not go under the FEC.
Okay, so does anybody have any comment about that, what's up here?
Well, Warren, it's been said time and again that they would have, I mean, even the FDOT study said they would have to, they would have to do a taking. They couldn't build it over the tracks. They're gonna build it to the side of the tracks, to the west. And there would necessarily be a taking.
But I think the takeaway was, and this is what was told by White House, the amount of taking, if you will, the term they used for a tunnel, I would think would be less. And they said, no, I'm mistaken. It would actually be considerably more.
Well, that's with a three-and-a-half-mile tunnel.
No.
Well, that's what, it has to be. That's what they, that's how they factored this in. It's a three-and-a-half-mile tunnel. Look at their proposal.
So Commissioner, for just a moment, and then I'll... This is one of the reasons that we've been brought in, is we have these differentials that are here. And we want to get another level of detail. What are the actual properties that would be impacted in an actual, at least preliminary engineering route? So you have an understanding what would or wouldn't be possible. I'll let Nasri speak to the actual underlying technical aspects of it. But I think your question identifies the importance of what we're trying to do now to make sure you have actionable information.
Because I think that differential was like 35 versus 100 parcels. So, I mean, we're talking, you know, three-time order of magnitude.
And it's not just length, it's width also, Mr. Mayor, I understand.
What's that?
It's not just length, it's width, too. The tunnel would have more of a wider, you'd have to take more, it's not just length, it's a wider track that you'd have to take from a minute to main.
But the three-and-a-half miles...
Even if it wasn't, it's...
The three-and-a-half miles is built right into the study. So if we're not talking about three-and-a-half miles, we're not talking about the same amount of taking, then.
Well, that's something we...
Commissioner, from a technical perspective, I don't see any reason to the statement that was made that you cannot put a tunnel under an existing railroad. I put a tunnel seven feet below the port in San Francisco, okay? It is an issue of getting underground easement, because FEC are, they own all the way down to the center of the earth, so you got to get an easement from them for that area. And the easement can be defined by the size of the tunnel and periphery around it in which will be impacted. Of course, somebody has to make an agreement with the railroad to get that easement. But technically, you can build a tunnel under an existing railroad. As a matter of fact, a lot of transit and rail project are being done in the existing old railroad right-of-way, because those are the available right-of-way, rather than going under private properties. And I would ask Martin and Mike Mooney to elaborate if they need to.
That, well, it's half of the issue. But the other half is, we were told, and that's why we need to be, we need to be presented on December 5th to get the real answer. Apparently, I was told that it's a nonstarter. Bright Line will not allow us to go underneath them. They, and, yes.
Yes, Mr. Knights.
Invited by my colleagues to have a comment. If you would, the approach cutting could not be.
Well, we know that.
Yeah.
It has to be a bore cutting, yeah.
So anything to do with, anything to do with open cut and the approach cuttings would have to be to the side of the track. But Nasri is absolutely right. You can put, technically, it's better to be dead center underneath. Because if you put the tunnel to the side, you're gonna get differential settlement that could affect the rails. Yeah? So this precedent is falling.
All right, so let's open this up to...
Well, Mayor, I'm gonna throw one more fun fact into this while we're doing it. I don't know how the marine industry feels about doing a cut-and-cover approach, by the way, that blocks half the river. Because the whole point of doing this high-bridge tunnel is to maintain marine traffic. You know, we've got yachts that are in excess of 100-foot in length, which also means they're fairly wide. And if you're taking one-third to one-half of the channel and, you know, putting, putting construction into that, there's not enough room to fit one of our large yachts up and down the river. And help me, 12 months, 18 months? How long are we...
I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting to do the immersed tube technique or to cover them. That's why, if you're gonna do that, it's much shorter. But that's why we went, we're looking at the properties outside that, that we will be able to come from the side, go down under the existing right-of-way, and stay down to cross the new river and go back up.
So really, the only option that would be feasible for the marine industry is going to be a bore. We're not gonna be able to do any of the other techniques that we've talked about. So there are options in general for building a tunnel, but they're not feasible, they're not practicable in our circumstance because of the necessity of maintaining marine traffic for very large yachts.
Also because of the utilities. That was the other reason. If you remember, they were saying it becomes a challenge if we're gonna do cut-and-cover because of the existing utility lines. So that's why the boring approach has to be taken.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure that I understand. Thank you.
Right, exactly. Okay, so, gentlemen, do you mind just sitting here and listening to, okay, great.
Don't leave.
Start with John Millage, and I think John Millage and Jenny Morhohn. John Millage, Jenny Morhohn, followed by Phil Purcell. Could you push the button?
Push the button, okay.
We need a sign that says, push button here.
I know.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, John, operator.
Thank you, Mayor. John Millage, General Counsel, Downtown Development Authority. With me is Jenny Morhohn, the President and CEO of the DDA. She's gonna present a short tunnel option, and that was pursuant to an expert that we retained and did a preliminary concept of what's feasible. And he had a couple of shorter tunnel options worthy of exploring. And I'm just gonna, before she gets up, I just want to make a couple of comments.
Sure.
One is... Um, one is Susan Lent knows what she's talking about, the reason I know this is, we worked with her for at least fifteen years on obtaining federal funding, and we had great success on it, and so, um, that was in large part due to her guidance. Second thing I wanna say is, one of the principles that we learned in this whole process is stakeholder consensus is, um, very important, and it's not just important at the outset, this is, this isn't like a process like land use, where you have these hearings, and you have people show up, and they give their point of view, and you move forward, that's not really how it works. If you're chasing after federal funding at another level, uh, you better have pretty good consensus, it doesn't have to be exclusive to everybody's concerns, but it better be pretty solid, and it's tough, and it's hurting cats, but if you don't do it, what happens is, when you get in front of these federal agencies, you're gonna be competing for all kind of, you know, highly competitive dollars, yes, there's more money, but there's gonna be more applications, um, than the money that they can allocate, and they weed you out, and so, so, so at the staff level, and just be, you know, having some experience and having these meetings over the years, they'll weed you out, so that's very important, um, to, to get that consensus, you know, as close as you can, um, and that's also gonna handcuff your, you know, your political representatives, because it's a staff process, and it's a political process, and you need both, so it's very important. So, I think from the DDA, as in the past, you know, we've oftentimes stepped in and worked on, you know, developing consensus between the city, county, state, and the federal government, we'll work as hard as we can to be, uh, that, you know, that intermediary, you know, here to, to get that done, um, and do what we can to, to get that consensus and move forward. I don't think we're there yet, um, we could be, we could get there shortly, we'll see, um, but, and we'll work as hard as we can to do that, and, uh, but with that, I'll turn it over to Jenny, and she'll show you some preliminary concepts.
Great.
Thank you, Jenny Morehorn, DDA, and approximately one to two years ago, when the FDOT initial studies were coming through, and the PDNE reports were established, our Board of Directors took a position to advocate and support the tunnel. Over time, as multiple studies have come on board, we realized it would be important, as that independent partner with the city and the county, to have our own set of recommendations, and, uh-
That's not you.
Your time's up. Mine just started. So, with that, um, knowing that this is a fairly small but well-esteem group of experts globally that focus in on tunnels, um, several of whom are here on the stage today, we were fortunate to be connected with Dr. Gary Briarly, um, his company goes by Dr. Mole Incorporated, and he would have been here today, um, he had recent back surgery, I think he's dug upwards of five-hundred-plus tunnels, so, uh, he was unable to attend today, but he has had conversations, um, with others here today to really understand some of the background, and his scope was primarily to look at these existing studies, but also, as I mentioned, to give some new perspective on alternative tunnel concepts, as we discussed earlier today, uh, three bridge options were always on the table, but only one tunnel option, so, with the primary goal, and I'm, I'm trying to advance this, okay, the primary goal of looking at the shortest and most shallow possible tunnel for the lowest potential cost. Commissioner Herbst, you mentioned unknown unknowns, with the scope that Dr. Briarly had from us, there are certainly some aspects that couldn't be fully addressed in his initial review, some of those are listed up here, we've already talked about those, easements of adjacent properties, utilities, where the final station may be located, and also those operational and service decisions, but something that was brought up earlier that I think is important to note, uh, Dr. Briarly focuses in on what he calls intelligent tunnel design, and he really impressed upon, um, our team at the DDA, that so much time is needed to truly understand the preferred project layout, all of the ground conditions, and from there, to really then have a thorough analysis of the construction methods, third-party impacts, and your design criteria, which sounds a lot like all of this work that needs to be done before we can have a full, open-eyed conversation on our preferred alternatives. So, um, with that, there were two alternative tunnel concepts that Dr. Briarly recommended, one actually does not include a station, the station in his, um, perspective is the most expensive piece of this entire project, so, starting with what we just discussed, simply going under the river and back up, um, you reduce the tunnel length to just about a half a mile, and I'm, I'm talking about the, uh, the text on the right-hand of the screen, to just a little less than three thousand feet from portal to portal. Um, generally, this means that it would come up just after Broward Boulevard, and also come up south of the river, um, just around Sixth Street. Again, we're not able to go into the full details of the impacts to all properties, and this could, of course, be shifted, but the intent was to look at the shortest possible tunnel. Um, also, looking at a, a double bore, a dual bore, that was consistent in both his recommended concepts for, uh, a tunnel that includes an underground station and one that does not, and also, the minimum depth at the, um, top of the tunnel under the river. Initially, he illustrated a concept with a five-foot minimum cover, that could potentially be more with, um, the deep soil mixing that would need to be created, to create that really stable ground under the river and through the, the station of the tunnel. But with that, in, uh, Dr. Briarly's estimate for construction-only, again, not knowing utilities and property acquisitions, et cetera, we're talking about a substantial decrease in the cost to construct a tunnel that simply gets you under the river, which I believe was the majority of the goals for this, this infrastructure solution. The second proposal, um, does have an underground station, again, but it's also a, um, a tunnel that quickly goes under the river and back up, and one of the things that I should point out is, in Dr. Briarly's experience, he did mention that he has seen, while he's not in, uh, a service and operational expert, he designs and builds tunnels, um, he has seen where subway system, train systems can operate with a grade of five percent, which in his recommendation, actually assist in getting under the river faster, and then decelerating as you approach the station. So, again, these are different variables and factors that he brought to the table, and an order of magnitude cost, including, um, the, the tunnel, I'm sorry, the station, um, does raise that considerably, because the station was the, the most expensive piece, but still, these order of magnitude costs for construction-only are far different than what we have been speaking about in the community for some time. Um, the, the next two slides are graphics that really illustrate the with-thestation concept and without astation concept, and again, think of these as very preliminary, they do work from an engineering standpoint, but they are simply high-level concepts where the portals for where the tunnel enters and exit could, of course, be adjusted based on community needs for cross-section roadways, but this is to illustrate almost a fifty-foot differential between where the original station was proposed to be located underground, to where the proposed station could be in a much more shallow configuration, and again, getting, um, anywhere at five feet minimum, maybe ten feet under the new river. So, this option, and then the, the second one is the most simple, shallow, shortest solution for a half-mile tunnel. So, again, we felt it was important to bring an alternative tunnel concept or concepts to the table, being that there were multiple bridge analyses, but really only one, uh, tunnel solution that was looked at. So, we look forward to continuing to work together, albeit, it's, whether it's this short time period over the next several months, or as we continue to figure out what is the best infrastructure solution, uh, for the tunnel. I think some of the things that were just said about looking at adjacent properties, whether it's public right-of-way, city right-of-way, county-owned land, private land, is you really do have an opportunity with these two concepts to start to think about the above-ground real estate moves that could also be beneficial, not just to the project and the service, but to the downtown character and fabric as well. So, with that, um, I am certainly not an engineer, and probably cannot answer any technical questions, but, uh, we felt it was important to share this information today.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Well, I would, just go ahead, 'cause I was gonna say, it sounds, one more thing for BDO to look at now, is we have another study, so really what you're doing is a meta-analysis of all these other studies?
Well, I know Dr. Briarly for many, many years, I worked with him closely, and he's, uh, he's, he's a good guy.
So, you've got him on speed dial, is what you're saying, great.
So, so, the question is, does he know what he's talking about?
Yes, he does, uh, but we need, as I said, we need to look at the reality of all the aspect of that, and we can, uh, if we get the copy of the report, we'd be glad to look into it as well.
We could do that, sure, absolutely. Yes, Commissioner?
Jenny, thank you, listen, first of all, thank you very much for, for, for coming today, um, couple quick, I'm looking, look, anything that could get a tunnel done, I, I'd be in favor of, I, I would love to, to, to put all ducks in the road to get the county on board with the tunnel, so, couple questions, this was a study that the DDA had done, or they're doing, or tell me about Dr., is Dr. Mole, I hate to be disrespectful, is that his name?
We, we call him that fondly, uh, that is the name of his company, he is Dr. Gary Briarly, we, um, solicited his services to provide consultant, uh, guidance to the DDA for this initiative in an independent fashion.
And he just, he just published the study, or this is just, it's ongoing right now? What's the status?
We received, um, the, the final study, which again, is a text report with some graphic examples of his recommendations for an alternative, at the very end of September, and have been working to understand it a little bit better through October, and just recently, um, started to communicate these two concepts out.
Mr., Mr. Mayor, um, could I ask if they could be invited also for December 5th? I mean, anything that could possibly get us to a tunnel?
If they're available, absolutely.
I mean, I would, anything that could get us to a tunnel, I'd be in favor of.
Okay.
Would they be available?
We, we will certainly ask and, and-
Okay.
Intend to.
Well, thank, thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, and I think I said, uh, yes. Phil Purcell, followed by James Labrie, followed by Patrick Zeiler.
Good evening, or it's almost good evening, I guess, good day, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Phil Purcell from the Marine Industry Association. Um, you know, we're kinda here today because, back in 2020, we sat with FDOT and initiated this study, so we're the ones that actually petitioned to have the study done, um, knowing what was coming down the path in terms of Brightline, potential commuter rail, things like that, but we've always been at the table for solutions, and so, when you look at it, you know, currently, we get ten minutes of that bridge that goes over the new river right now at four feet, we get ten minutes per hour, uh, that's something that the Coast Guard, again, the Coast Guard actually controls the bridges at the end of the day, so we could sit with the Coast Guard, it wouldn't make a difference till we build something. Um, that said, thirty-six Brightline trains running over today, and anywhere from eleven to fourteen freight trains running over, we get ten minutes, so there's nothing else for us to give at the end of the day, for a nine-point-eight-billion-dollar industry in Broward County, we have nothing else to give. So, we're all for the tunnel, and I think we've said that from day one, again, given the criteria of ridership and things like that, that was our only question, and we're always under the path of go down two paths at once, so that way, if the one path that's your favorite path is the one you want it, but for some reason it doesn't work, you don't have to start over again, you have another solution, per se. And so, when it comes to a bridge, currently, there's six bridges currently on the river, there's four vehicular bridges and two railroad bridges, the CSX and FEC, so the four vehicular bridges open thirty-plus times a day, you guys know that when you're in your car, and that's for our industry at the end of the day, those boats going by, and per Commissioner Herbst's comment, like, with a cut-and-cover approach to the river, it would not work, it worked back when you did the McKinley Tunnel, because the boats were, a big boat was seventy feet in length with an eighteen-foot beam, currently, the boats have anywhere from a twenty-five to thirty-foot beam going up that river, or greater, um, so that wouldn't work either. What concerns us is, a lot of times, the dialogue is, well, if the, if the tunnel doesn't work, let's give the marine industry a twenty-six-foot bridge, why would we add another bridge that the vehicular bridges are already opening thirty times a day? Wouldn't solve the trains' problem, and it won't solve our problem, it'd only create a new impediment for the seventh impediment on the river. So, I love Jenny's, uh, point there, where you do a tunnel, and it's, it's, you know, half-mile long, or, or a mile long, whatever that may be, um, I think we do need to find out, is FEC or Brightline gonna give us an easement underneath that, 'cause to have all these conversations without having known where the tunnel's gonna go, seems like a lesson in futility, if we get down a path, we find this tunnel, and then at the last minute, they say, oh, and by the way, you can't build under our, our railroad, that's a big issue, no matter what it is, we need to know that we have that right. Um, the, uh, you know, the other bridges that were proposed at, at fifty-five feet or eighty feet, the eighty feet was a fixed bridge, the fifty-five feet is a bascule bridge, we've talked about a forty-foot bridge, not that we want a forty-foot bridge in terms of, rather have a tunnel, but if we had to do something from a compromise standpoint, again, at the table, trying to find solutions, a forty-foot bridge, if you could land it at the station without amending it and things like that, would solve a lot of the problems. I understand that you can make a very aspirational bridge, and I believe Commissioner Glassman said recently, how would you make an aspira-, that's, to me, again, why we need to go down two paths simultaneously, 'cause right now, we're focused on the tunnel, and I agree, that is the best solution, but if we can't get there, for whatever the reason, we shouldn't have to start over, we should be able to flip the page and go, this is where we wanna go, so that would be my ask to the Commissioner.
So, Phil, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Uh, on the White House report, it says that, uh, the low-level bascule bridge, which I'm not sure what that means, maybe it's the twenty-five-foot bridge?
Twenty-five foot, yeah.
This is ninety percent of the vessels can pass when the bridge is closed.
Total fallacy, and so, you know, tw-
So, that's not correct, right?
Total fallacy, yeah.
Okay, so, the mid-level bascule bridge says ninety-nine percent of the vessels can pass when the bridge is closed.
Ninety percent of the bridges, at, at fifty-five feet, ninety percent of the bridges, ninety percent of the boats could pass.
That would be correct, but the first one, the low level, the ninety percent could not pass?
Not at all.
Okay.
Our industry doesn't serve, you know, service, uh, the yards, that they're paying in excess of three, four-hundred million for these yards, they're not servicing twenty-foot boats, they serve eighty feet and above primarily.
All right, now, even the high-level bridge, which I think was eighty-five feet?
Eighty feet.
Eighty feet, that could be fixed?
That could be a fixed bridge, and it would, it would solve everything, so again, if you look at I-95 and Tri-Rail, those are both fifty-five feet and fixed, so the, the yards that are west of the river already know that they have that confinement, now there's yards like Lauderdale Marine Center that has built a big business around catamarans and sailboats, those can approach eighty feet, and the reason eighty feet's the mark is, we have a set of wires going across, high wires, high-voltage wires, that's where the eighty feet comes from.
Okay, okay, thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
Patricia Zeiler, followed by James Labrie?
Oh.
Oh, James Labrie, I'm sorry, James, you're first, then Patricia.
It says, press here. You turn it off. James Labrie? Push it again. Hi, uh, James Labrie, resident of Fort Lauderdale for twenty-one years, um, this was, uh, really educational and informational, I appreciate all the experts that have come today, and I appreciate the last speaker from the marine industry, um, I just wanted to, um, go back to that point about the low-level bridge, uh, the FDOT people had said it was ninety percent of the boats would pass-
Ninety, ninety percent.
Underneath of it, so, the ten percent that don't, what's the number of boats that we're talking about? If a hundred boats go up and down the river, uh, every day, and ten of them have to be, have to wait a little bit, I mean, is that really such a, a problem for the marine industry? I, I'm asking a question.
But, but Mr. Purcell said that number was inaccurate.
Well-
Mr. Purcell said that ninety percent, that ninety percent figure at the low-level bascule bridge was-
What does Mr. Schwab say, 'cause I believe that, that came from FDOT?
Well, this is not a question-answer period, so, this is where you're allowed to give your comments, and, uh-
Okay, so, the FDOT said ninety percent, so we'll just leave it at that.
Yeah.
Conceptually, I'm for a tunnel, and, but if we can't afford it, then I think we need to go with the least expensive bridge that's possible, and, and I, and I understand the importance of the marine industry, I have nothing against them, bigger issue for me, as a driver, is going to be those cross streets that go east and west, when we have all the trains going through, and the inconvenience it's going to cause, ten thousand or more drivers every day versus ten boat captains, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Pat, followed by Chris Nelson, followed by Dan Lindblade.
Is that right, are you here?
You're on, you're on.
Great, okay, so, I'm gonna go from a little different perspective, I was kind of requested to do this, and I'm speaking to you today as Fort Lauderdale Historical Society, who basically function as the city's historian, um, we also the caretakers of six of the most historic properties the city owns, and then I'm also a resident Dorsey Riverbend, and I'll save that for the end, but I, I was struck at the last meeting you held, there was one of the consultants that said, the crossing of the new river was the linchpin of the entire southeastern seaboard, and it struck me so because it was exactly the, the problem that was faced in eighteen ninety-five, when Henry Flagler had finished his railroad, and, um, both, um, Mary Brickle and Julia Strusavon Tuttle had asked for him to come to Miami, and he was, no, he's reached Palm Beach, he's done, he's made his money, he's now trying to make it back, um, and then there came a freeze in eighteen ninety-five, but the foresightedness of Mary Brickle- But the foresightedness of Mary Brickle, she, by 1890, Mary Brickle owned four square miles of the New River. She knew he would need that crossing when the time came, and she wanted to be the one to control it. So she owned all that property, and she is the reason that the city has its first original plat. That was one of her concessions with Henry Flagler, and a lot of others as well. But it was her foresightedness, though, that got that happening. She didn't, she gave the land to Flagler. She didn't sell it to him, she swapped it for concessions. Then I thought about the Kenny Tunnel, which was mentioned by one of your experts today. That was a very contentious decision that this commission had to put up with for a very long time. But historically, in 1940, in fact, April 25, 1940, the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale requested, they actually voted positively on a resolution, and it's 1037, it's in your history, it's in our history, to request the State Building Department, the State Road Department at that time, for a tunnel at the federal highway crossing. So 1940, this commission was already thinking about that. It wasn't decided until 1956 in a referendum. And the vote that time was very contentious. Some very famous historical pioneers of the town, including Ivy Stranahan, were very anti-tunnel. But Henry Kenny, Kenny for whom it's named, was the Broward editor of Miami Herald, and he really advocated for the tunnel. And I think all of us that live here today for so long are really very glad it's a tunnel and not a bridge. So that referendum was 7,040 yea and 6,443 nays. So it was still a really tight decision. Again, we care for those historic buildings that are yours, and they're directly to the west of the pathway we're talking about for a bridge. And it would be very detrimental to those buildings to be that complete shade. I'm hoping that that is one of the items you're taking into consideration. And the third, and the one I think is most precious to me, and I'm only speaking as a resident of Dorsey River Bend and a consultant with the African-American historical groups of Fort Lauderdale that are working with us on a number of projects. The FEC corridor in 1926 was codified by the City of Fort Lauderdale as the western boundary of where a black person was permitted to live. It was a geographical boundary that lived in that community for multiple generations. I just am so struck that, I don't think we've had enough conversations in that community, and I'm definitely not their spokesperson. I think we need to go back to the Trail Blazers, which this commission just recognized, or nominated for the Judge Nance Award at the County Pioneer Days, and they did receive that award. Thank you very much for doing that. I think that's a group that needs to be spoken to, as well as some of the other historical black groups in the northwest quadrant of the City of Fort Lauderdale, to really gain their impressions and their support for whatever the project ends up being, because it has been their defining line for multiple generations. Thank you, Vice Mayor, Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners, for your time.
Thank you.
Of course.
Chris Nelson, followed by Dan Lindblade, followed by Alan Hooper.
All right. Hello, Commission, Chris Nelson, and I live at New River, and want to thank Commissioner Sterman for the informative session he had. He's doing a great job of keeping us informed of what's going on with these meetings in that district. And the bridge or the tunnel, I believe we're being presented with a false premise here. Because of course, we're not going to want a bridge, because it would probably be unsightly. But we're being put in this position as, oh, okay, it's got to be a bridge or a tunnel. And my question is, why do we need this to begin with? Like, this is going to be commuter rail, right? And I know this is one of Secretary Pete Buttigieg's projects. You know, he wants to have his 15-minute cities and this idea where everybody's driving electric cars around that get destroyed in floods, that, you know, they can just turn the power grid off anytime they want, and we're all going to be going on these little, these little boxes everywhere and stuff, and are traveling on train everywhere. But let's just be realistic. Let's look at, let's look at the, at the rail we already have. It's half-empty, the one going down to Miami, the Sun Rail, or whatever it's called.
Brightline.
The Brightline. Going, yeah, I don't even know what it's called. Going down to, it's half-empty most of the time. People are gonna, as much as I hate traffic and all this stuff, it's not going to change. People are still going to want to drive their cars. And then when I see things like environmental justice, like what the heck is that? Like, this is why we're building a tunnel, environmental justice? Like, what are you talking about? Shouldn't we be building a tunnel because we need it, not because of some political ideology? I liked some of this gentleman's comments over here, talking about the cost. Like, what the heck? Do we know what this is going to cost? And then I see this rush, oh, we got to get it done during the Biden administration, because he's down with all this stuff. But, you know, we might have Ron DeSantis come in as president. It's not going to be Trump, by the way, but we might have Ron DeSantis come in as president. That ain't ever happening again. And then he might put the kibosh on this stuff, so we got to spend it now, and we got to make these decisions now. Well, why would he put the kibosh on something like this? Maybe because it's not needed. The Dean Trantallis Tunnel sounds nice, okay?
I thought so too.
But in this case, I'm concerned that we're doing this for the wrong reasons. It's going to end up being a tunnel to nowhere. It's going to be something that people aren't going to use. And this gentleman talked a lot about taxes, inflation, that we don't really, that we're lacking information. That was the one thing he said, that we're lacking a lot of information on this. And what are we going to expect from the federal government? What are we going to expect from funding? And we don't want to see higher taxes and a giant tax bill come from a project that's unnecessary. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Dan Lindblade, is Dan still here? He had to go, okay. Alan Hooper, followed by Melinda Boker, followed by Jaclyn Scott.
Can you hear me? Okay, good. All right, so as the Chair of the DDA, I appreciate everything that was said as it relates to the shorter tunnel. I think that that is a good place to start. I think that all of us in this city, in the City of Fort Lauderdale, and I would hope the City Commission would all be together on this, that we need to create the best product possible to protect our beautiful new downtown. I think Phil Purcell would be happy if the Andrews Third Avenue Bridge had followed suit with the Kenny Tunnel, and we had nothing but tunnels. And I think that if you stand next to the Andrews Bridge, or you stand next to the Third Avenue Bridge, near the seawall, it's pretty unsightly, okay? And you can hear the cars going over it all the time. Well, now, think about a 60-foot wide, which is like a road, up in the air, 60-foot wide road that's going to carry two very large trains going in both directions. Think about the noise. Think about all the columns and all the areas under the bridge that aren't going to be beautiful. Think about the idea of doing a shorter bridge and how long it lasts, 150 years versus half that time with the bridge. If we do the cheapest bridge, what does that mean? It's the loudest bridge? You've got to build one big enough for super mega yachts to get underneath them. So, and then the construction, you know, we talk about the difficulty of constructing a tunnel. Well, you have to build a long bridge with pilings, and you have to dig up the ground. You have to do eminent domain. You are going to run into utilities. You're going to have almost the same problems during construction. It's going to take probably as long, if not longer. It's something that's being built up in the air. Everybody can see it. There is no reason why we're not all holding hands together and saying to the county, which represents people in Plantation, which I've read opinions from Plantation, and they could care less what happens to downtown Fort Lauderdale. We need to think about what's most important to make our world-class city continue to be a world-class city. And the best thing for us is to find the most cost-effective tunnel, and then don't allow anything else to be built. Don't even talk about another alternative. I guarantee you, if we stood as a wall and didn't allow them to do a bridge, and we fought for a tunnel, they're going to come with us. They're going to come with us, and they're going to do it, and we'll find the money to do it. But if we just say, let's go, and we build something, and we regret it later, it's done. We're stuck with it. And all of us are going to be standing there thinking, why the hell did we build a bridge? Thank you.
Thank you. Melinda, and followed by Jackie Scott.
Hello, Commissioners, Mayor, and Experts. Nice to see you all. I won't belabor the point. I think that Alan just very perfectly verbalized a lot of what we all feel. But as President of the Downtown Fort Lauderdale Civic Association, I just want to make sure that we reiterate the actual residential community's position on this. And our position has not changed since we voted last year. We had multiple presentations on this. We were with Phil Schwab and FDOT. We actually did a vote after their very good presentation at the time. But downtown, which this train track is our western border, is fully in support of the tunnel option. Our eastern border just happens to be the tunnel, the Henry Kenny Tunnel. So I really appreciate Patricia Zeiler's overview of the history of this. And 150 years will be in year 2173. And I think that if we can get this tunnel done, I think, you know, the community downtown, looking back at us in 2023, and the opportunity before you guys, and before the county, to do this in a very prospective-looking, majestic-looking way, I think they're going to be grateful. So just wanted to reiterate our position. I'm also allowed to speak for, to say that the Tarpon River, who also has their eastern border, is fully in support of the tunnel, as well as, I think, at the pre-agenda meeting, Warren, you mentioned that you're not aware of any neighborhood in District Four that wants a bridge. So I just want to make sure, I know we're not doing a referendum, but want to make sure that that neighborhood perspective gets out there. We are actively seeking a meeting with Lamar Fisher to come speak to our residents. We've been told he's unavailable. We understand this is in the county's court. But just appreciate whatever this commission can do to make sure our downtown has a bright future. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Jaclyn Scott, anyone else wish to speak on this item?
I think George just went to sign up. Platt just went to sign up. Good afternoon. I'm speaking on behalf of Coley Hammock Homeowners Association, as well as myself. Our HOA took a position months and months ago that we totally, totally support, 100% putting in a tunnel. I know this is becoming a very difficult decision because of the pressure that you're getting from the county, and, you know, a lot of things are going on. There's a lot of politics, there's lobbyists, there's everything. But what I really want you to think about, in all sincerity, is what is going to be right for our city. As a resident for 65 years who's grown up here, I think it's extremely important not to divide our city and not to put up a bridge. Me and some of you will all be dead when this thing happens. You know, you won't have to answer to anybody, but it'll be pretty bad if all of a sudden we start doing bridges through the downtown. You know, I came here because the gentleman that I'm closest to, sitting in the middle of the state, I heard him say, let's hear what the public wants. Well, I can tell you, I think the majority of the public that have followed this and that love our city want a tunnel. When I start hearing people talk about it's too much money, I want you to think yourselves of things that you buy for yourselves. You buy for your home. You buy as an investment. Sometimes you spend a little more money because it's the right decision, and you know it's going to last longer, and it's better for you. I beg you guys not to make a decision based on money. This is a multi-generational decision that is going to shape our downtown. Everything that Alan Hooper said was correct. Patricia Zeiler, right on it. And the one last thing I'm going to say to you is this. You're in a poker match with the county, and if you start folding right now, it's ridiculous. Stick together. Let the county and let everyone know that the City of Fort Lauderdale wants a tunnel, and that is the option we want them to go with. I really hope that you guys will stick together as a team and do this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. George Platt, followed by Charlie Ladd.
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners. George Platt, I live on southeast 10th Avenue, just off Broward, and obviously been following this for a long time. And the Broward Workshop, where I am co-chair of the Transportation Committee, has been working on commuter rail in South Florida in the FEC corridor since the turn of the century, this century. And, and, and I am extremely grateful for you all bringing these experts here today, and the other experts who are not here. But a lot of work has been going into this, and the workshop doesn't, is not going to get into a speaking contest with the county. I don't, you know, we want the county and the city to be working together, and DOT, and all the cities in the corridor. But obviously, all things being equal, if we can afford a tunnel, we'd love to see a tunnel, because we think it solves a lot of problems. I want to mention just a couple things, though, okay? And that is that FECR, that's Grupo Mexico, owns the corridor, and FECI, which owns Brightline, that's Fortress, okay? I've met with both of these companies. I don't know, I mean, when I read the White House Group Report, it made it sound like neither FECI or FECR favored a tunnel. I don't think that's accurate. I think that FECI would love to have a tunnel, they just don't want to pay for it, okay? But they would certainly love to have a tunnel. And FECR would probably love to get those passenger trains off of their tracks. And, but the issue with FECR, they said two things. One is, I said, because I said, why don't you put the freight underground too? Then you'd have, say, three miles of right-of-way worth $500 a square foot. Not a bad thing for redevelopment, probably be good for your company. But they said, look, we got two problems. One is the grade, and the other is what they say is a federal law that prohibits hazardous materials on trains from going through tunnels in the middle of urban areas. I would tell you, I've talked to the county attorney's office, I've talked to a lot of people, including your current consultant, and nobody can find this law that they keep referring to. I've never seen it. I looked for it myself for about three hours, and I'm a pretty good researcher. So here's the thing. The utilities that are under the tracks are not 40 feet down, okay? There is a way to do a tunnel, a shorter tunnel, with portals that come in and out, that do not interfere with the railroads. Both Brightline and FECR have said one thing very adamantly. Don't screw around with our trains while you're building whatever it is is going to get built. And they meant that, okay? They can't afford a disruption any more than the marine industry could afford a cut-and-cover way of getting across the river. So, you know, I like the fact that these studies are being accelerated. I want, again, I congratulate all of the Commissioners for asking the hard questions. The City Manager and his staff, Ben and the whole team have just done, I think, a really good job of trying to move this along, and I do want to encourage more meetings with the county. If this were easy, it would have been done a long time ago, okay? It's tough, but you guys are up to it, and I'm confident you're going to get it done. The Broward Workshop supports commuter rail in the FEC corridor from downtown Miami to North Palm Beach. That's our mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ladd?
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Mayor. I just came to show support for the DDA staff that was speaking, but of course, I can't keep my mouth shut. Always want to have an opportunity to speak. And the only concept that I want to try to get across is, you know, it's, Broward County, for decades, has taken the easy way out, over and over and over again. We live in a dynamic... and over again. We live in a dynamic, wealthy community that's going to continue to grow. Our downtown, what we've built, and now have 25,000 residents, will likely be 50,000 to 75,000 residents in the next 20 or 30 years. And you only get chances like this once in a while to do something and to do it right. And doing it right, no matter how much work it is and how hard it is, is what defines a great city. And this is one of those moments where we, as a county and as a city, decide, are we going to be something special? Are we going to do the easy? And I vote for, let's do it special. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that closes our public hearing. And I guess, again, I'd like to thank everyone who has been able to come here today and to speak on behalf of this project. I hope you can come to December 5th, like, okay? And I don't know what happened to Umer, but I guess he had another engagement.
He had to catch a flight.
Had to catch a flight, okay. All right. And Tom probably also. All right. So, thank you, gentlemen, ladies, Susan. Enjoy your stay here, and we appreciate all of your input today. It certainly brought us a little closer to where we need to be. Thank you, Phil, and we appreciate everything you've done.
And before, DDA, Jenny, just two quick questions. Number one, just to reiterate, we'd love, it's Dr. Mole is the name, correct? He's built over 200 tunnels, you said? I wonder why he needs back surgery, I would imagine. But, I mean, I'm looking forward to, I mean, if there's, whatever we could do to
Medical humor.
I know. It's not very, no, it's dad humor. It's not a very good dad joke. But whatever we could do to push for the tunnel, I thank you so much for your work in that.
Thank you. Okay, business to Las Olas parking garage.
Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Nice, are you out of, where are you out of, out of London? You came here from London? Oh. Well, I hope you enjoy your stay. I hope you enjoy your stay. Thank you. When are you going back? Tomorrow night? Oh. So the best thing about We celebrate Thanksgiving here. You may want to stay here.
So the best thing about the tube is that they're 100-second headway. So as the train pulls out, there's another one right behind it.
You can stay there. And in the, I don't know how many more times we're going to be at Parker, but I'd recommend that the podium be brought onstage, rather than, it seems like we diminish the speaker when they're, when they're Well, I guess you're, I guess.
This may be the last time.
Put a ramp.
This may be the last time we're here.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, Las Olas Parking Garage. This has been an issue that's been sort of nagging at the city for quite a while.
Since day one.
What we're talking about is deficiencies in the workmanship and the enhancements that were made to the parking garage. The parking garage itself is fully functional, as I understand, but what we have is a problem with the screening around it, as well as the lighting system that was applied to it. So, Mr. Rogers, please give us an update, and also, our city attorney could also participate in this discussion.
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor. I'll ask IT to go to the next slide. So, the history of this, as you alluded to, you know, we've had challenges with the lighting, sod lighting, for, since the inception of the garage. I mean, the garage opened up in 2018, I want to say in December 2018. And we had some intermittent issues with the lights, but really, at the early 2020 phase, we found a lot of challenges with keeping the lights operational. We went back and worked with the manufacturer. We talked through, thank you, some of the issues we've had. They brought their staff on. We have an electrician that was hired through the CRA that was involved with it from the get-go. They came out and they found some deficiencies with, I believe, waterproofing and some of the connections. And we made those improvements. The lights were working for a period of time. And since that time, they've slowly went back into non-working order. So, there's a lot of individual strands of lights. Each blade is its own strand. And what's happened over time is that some of those strands have gone off. And with that, the, you know, total package or the visual from the roadway has got so segregated, to the point that we just made it a business decision to turn the lights off, rather than have them on. So right now, the good majority of the lights are in working order, but that percentage of them, 35%, 45% of them that aren't working, just has too much of an impact of the light show and the programming for us to keep them on. So what we did is, we went, and we, before I get to the potential resolutions, something to consider as we talk about the resolutions, as you can see on this slide, the development of the marina. So you used to be able to see all four sides relatively clear. Now with the marina there, the north side of the garage is somewhat limited. We've had some conversations with SunTech about their position on the lighting, and they're pretty neutral on what happens next. They built the, or they built the marina knowing that the garage had that specialty lighting, and kind of had that expectation. But they haven't said that if they are really advantageous of trying to replace all the lights or not. So what we did is, we went to the electrician and the lighting company, and we went through a different, you know, matrix or menu of options that we could do. And if I start at the bottom, option E is really do nothing, right? Leave it as it is. Work with the city's attorney's office on trying to figure out if there's any legal action, claims that we could do. But until that is identified or concluded, really take no action, no investment, and no light facade. We've heard a lot of communications from the neighborhood and from elected officials about the desire to have the lights back on. So option D would be to purchase new lighting for only the non-working lights and upgrade the software. So that comes out to about $350,000. The concerns with that option is that that doesn't resolve the ones that are currently working that we anticipate will fail in the future. So three or four months from now, we could be in the almost exact same situation we are now, and looking to put another couple hundred thousand dollars to get those activated. Option C is a million dollars. And what this one is doing is saying, we've got a lot of lights on the garage. Let's take all the working lights on the garage, and let's just move them to two faces. Let's move them to the south face, and let's move them to the west face. With the development of the marina, and with the east face that faces Jackson Tower, let's leave those off. Let's take all the existing working strands and put them where the non-working strands are. Take all the extras and put them in a storage closet, and as other ones fail in the future, we can replace them. This one's a million dollars, and it's primarily all labor. It's extremely labor-intensive. There's equipment that has to be rented, and a lot of staff hours to go up there and take things down.
This is like a strand of Christmas lights, and there's that light that always doesn't go on, and then you try to
We're looking for the bulb, yep. And then that really leaves option A and B, and they're pretty similar. The option A is to replace all of the facade lights, take all the lights down, put all new lights up, and upgrade the software, so that way this new, say-the-art light is up to speed. Option B would be the same thing, but only on the two faces, the south and the west face, and just have those as our predominant faces. So, those are really the options. From a cost-benefit standpoint, if there's concerns about the lights shining into the marina or into Jackson Tower, I think staff would recommend B. But we also understand having, you know, a total working product that the community was expecting. So with that, I'll turn it to you.
Well, and so, let's just take this conversation a little bit further. As a result of this, we have engaged, we had engaged legal counsel to pursue a claim against the manufacturer. And unfortunately, we were not making a lot of headway. And Mr. Ansbro, do you want to comment on this?
Yes, when I first heard about this, when I first arrived here, working with you, I knew a fellow that I'd worked with at Dana Beach, who got me through several very litigious issues without having to go to court. By the way, Mayor, in response to your request, we do not have a prevailing party clause, so we're going to be out the attorney fees we spend. But the fellow I've
As will they.
Yes, that's true. But the gentleman I've recommended through this law from tonight is a resolution. I have high confidence in him. He's already been out to the site. He's looked at the issues of both the lighting and the mesh that keeps corroding, and he's ready to go to work. He's very good at what he does, and I highly recommend him. I think he'll do a good job for us.
All right. So regardless of whatever decision this commission makes, we're still going to pursue that because we have a damage claim.
Correct.
Okay. So let's hear from the district commissioner. Commissioner Sturman, what are your, Commissioner Glassman, what are your thoughts on this?
Thank you, Mayor Zeiler. I appreciate it.
Am I annexing that, too?
Thank you.
Well, you look alike.
Thank you. We get that a lot. So, Mayor, here are my thoughts. This building has worked maybe correctly for like, the first week and a half that the lights were up and the mesh. I hear from folks all the time about, oh, you should have this again. It looked so beautiful when the flag was, you know, for holidays, we had special treatments, whatever the holiday was, the lighting matched. I hear mostly from folks that are disappointed that we never got this right, from the beginning. I think doing it a piecemeal approach makes no sense at all. I have to think that this should be working the way it was designed. Lights on all four sides, and then also, we have to talk about the screening, although I think tonight, we're just talking about, or right now, we're just talking about the lighting, correct, Ben? We're not dealing with the screening, although I think our city attorney will be pursuing both, right?
That is correct.
Because both were defective. So my, you know, my thoughts are this, and we talked about this last evening at my pre-agenda meeting. It's hard to believe that this was ever scoped out properly. It's hard to believe that there was ever consideration for the environment in which this building is located, on the beach. And everyone knows that that creates a whole nother set of challenges with regards to wind and salt. I just don't believe that anyone ever took into consideration what goes into designing and installing a structure like this with all of these components. I don't see any sense in just doing this piecemeal, and just replacing certain lights, and thinking that the others are going to last. You know, there are, the software out there now, the technology out there. You know, Mayor, just the other evening, we were at the Hard Rock. Can you see that Hard Rock going through this with that lighting on that guitar, please? They would laugh if they ever had any issues like this. I think it's time for us to grow up, make sure that when we do projects like this, you know, the strand of lights and all of those, I guess they're almost like, each one of those, Ben, what's the word that you would use for those strands? Is that what you would say?
Strand, yeah.
Yeah, you know, it's like a skeleton all the way around the facility, where each of those lines of lighting, it's not that complicated. I think that we need to have what was designed, and we need to do this properly, and not just look at it and doing a job that's just going to give us more problems going forward.
Ben, can I ask you a question? If we, if a decision is made to replace all the strands of light, would the whole structure come off, allowing us to replace the screening, too?
No.
So the, so the, so the thing that, to which the lights are attached would remain?
Correct. So the mesh is the first component, then I'll use the term skeleton, which I believe the district commissioner used, and then the strands, the lighting strands adhere to the skeleton.
Okay, so the skeleton remains?
Correct.
Okay, that's not, that's not defective?
Correct.
Okay.
That's my knowledge.
Well, so if we decided to replace everything, that would be part of our damage claim, correct, Tom?
Yes, you're going to go for the deficiencies in both the mesh and the lighting, and go for everything we possibly can get?
Right.
And get that money to help rebuild what you wish to do.
And we don't have to wait for the outcome of a legal challenge to be
No, no. I mean, you may get immersed in litigation on this thing, but I'm, this guy that I'm recommending avoids that by getting what we want without having to go to court.
Okay.
That's my experience.
So, okay, any other thoughts on this?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If we go back to, like, page three or four, we have year 2022, we can see the structure, right?
Right.
Now, 2023, there's a structure that's being built in front of the garage.
It's a little deceptive
It is.
Because there's quite a bit of distance between those
Correct. Okay. How is the new structure giving obstruction to the lighting that we should be seeing that is defective?
Well, like I said, there's quite a bit of distance between the two buildings, so there's a wide pathway, and still there's a public view of the north side. And so, like I said, that's a little, that angle is very deceptive, because there's still, there's still, if we decided to do the north side, there'd still be a benefit. And if we're going to make a claim, we might as well, we might as well make a claim for the whole thing.
Now, this, okay, go ahead.
First, Mayor, I was just going to, you know, comment on what the mayor said. In between the two buildings, the garage and the marina structure, you have a two-lane road, you have a landscaping buffer, and then you also have, I believe it's an eight-foot or 10-foot sidewalk on the marina side. So it would be very similar to what the east face of the garage has right now. So if you look at the left side of that image, you can see the roadway and the trees, and on the opposite side of the street, there's a building.
Yeah.
You also have the entire northwest corner of the garage lighting that's exposed, regardless of whether you're discussing how much of the marina building is blocking the north side of the garage.
Right.
If you look at that, you have that whole corner still pretty much exposed.
And that, and the, and SunTech doesn't have an opinion one way or the other on this. They're not
Correct.
And my other part of the question is, with the defect that is, you know, what we're experiencing now, the other areas, the north, the east and the west and the south?
Right.
Are the lights working now? Are we able to see?
No, no.
So right there, there's
They're all turned off.
They're all turned off?
Yeah.
Okay. When they were on before we turned them off, what was the
It was the same, it was throughout the entire, throughout the entire structure, there was intermittent lighting deficiencies. Was it just one area? Didn't work all over?
Right. Lots of strands are out all the time. Even when it was working, there were struggles. I would get complaints all the time. Look at the lights. Is all these strands that are just not working? Yes, it was almost from the very beginning.
Okay.
Five years.
Five years.
It's been done on the cheap, if you ask me. I mean, that, it looked fancy, but it was not, it was, they used very cheap materials, because this never happens. If you look at the Hard Rock guitar, or the Sphere in Las Vegas, I mean, these things don't happen.
Right.
But again, we're talking about, I was told it had to do with the atmosphere, with the saltwater and things of that matter that could have been part of the defect. But my question is
That should have been part of the specifications, when they knew
I agree, but my question is, what's going to be different with the, is it going to be the same?
No.
Material? Material, the same opportunity with the same product, the same service that we're purchasing them from, the same producer? How do we know it's going to be different?
I can't speak to that from a technical standpoint. My knowledge or my understanding is that they've, they identified waterproofing issues when they resolved the issues last time, which created the initial defect or the initial challenge that they were trying to overcome. So I don't think it, I don't know if a different product in this environment would have the same issues if it's properly installed.
So before we make that decision
I'm sorry. How much did we pay before?
I'd have to go back and look. It was part of a CRA project for the garage. I don't have that
Okay, because we can find out, because I, what I don't think is right for us to do is to repeat the same action and think we're going to get a different result, okay? $1.2 million, there's a lot of other things that we can do with those dollars, and figure out another way to enhance or bring some type of lighting that will sustain the building. Because if we're going to get the same result, I don't think we're being
Well, I, no, everyone agrees with you. I mean, clearly, we're not going to replace, replace it with the same product. It would have to be a product that's designed to withstand the atmospheric impact.
That hasn't been said, though.
I'm sorry?
I haven't heard that.
No, we haven't heard that either.
No, we haven't heard that. So that's what we need to know. Is it a new product, or are we coming in, replacing?
The same thing, exactly. Has that been researched? Is that part of your cost analysis?
Yes, so this would be the next generation of same lighting strands.
Same company?
I believe it's from the same manufacturer.
Same company, next generation.
But how do we know, is there, is there a guarantee? I mean, what do we know that the product is different, that's going to be able to withstand the atmospheric impact of what's going on at the beach?
It's probably as good as the last guarantee.
Yeah, exactly.
So I think, Mayor, what I'm looking for is just some direction, and we can go back and we can take these concerns, we can verify them, come back. What I don't want to do is go down a path that the commission isn't seeking to go down. So if we can just give some general feedback, I can bring it back to the commission in a month or two and say, here's all the specifications. Or I can also work with the procurement department to find out if there's a different product or a different lighting structure we can do.
I think we need to do that. I think you need to do that. To the vice mayor's point, why go back to the same people who are saying, oh, yeah, we shouldn't have installed that, we should have installed this, and we'll make another shouldn't have installed that, we should have installed this, and we'll make another $2 million off of you? So I don't, we definitely don't want to go down that path. So we have to research products before we can make a decision.
But the feedback I'm hearing is option A is the path you'd want staff to...
No, I haven't spoken yet, so absolutely not. So we spent over $1 million on this the first time, because I remember when we speced this out. And it was in excess of $1 million to add the decorative features to the garage. Going back to that north side facade, how wide is that driveway, if you will, the alley between, you know, the marina building and the garage?
I'm going to go speculative here.
Yeah.
10-foot lanes, 20 feet, probably a four-foot landscaping buffer, and probably eight-foot sidewalk, so 32 feet, 30 feet.
Okay. Next question, where is the $2.1 million coming from?
So I think staff's perspective is it would become from the parking fund, since this is a parking asset.
And until we get our money back?
If, if, Mayor.
Well, I think, I mean, all right.
We've been trying to get it for years now without much success, so I will point to a couple of the last times we've sued contractors. In fact, the last time we sued a contractor, we wound up paying them, so...
Shame on us.
Well, it happens. Let's just, not, as you know, Mayor, as an attorney, not all outcomes in either litigation or settlement discussions go the way you hope they will. I'm not in favor of this. My approach would be utilize whatever lighting you have until they all die, and then go deactively the facade as is. I don't want to waste any more money. This was poorly conceived and executed the first time. No, this is not a staff issue. We didn't design it. But I don't believe in throwing good money after bad.
And so Commissioner, if it's A, B, C, D, and E, I heard E is your secondary option.
So run it out, which I believe was your C?
Okay.
All right, until it dies. Actually, so, let me just make sure I understand that. So moving all of your working lights to the other locations still has a cost of...
A million dollars.
Yep, no, I'm straight to E, okay? Let's just go straight to cut it off, pull the plug, be done with it, accept the fact that it was a bad idea, move forward.
Thank you.
Warren, what do you want to do?
Oh, thank you, I was waiting my turn very patiently. This is lights. It's not the garage, it's lights, guys. It's decorations. A million dollars, we have an action against the contractor. We could see where that goes. There's no guarantee we're going to get our money back, but like Commissioner Herbst says, putting good money after bad for lights.
Well, it's a decorative feature over the parking garage, so we didn't have a bare parking garage for, you know, on the outside of the garage.
I understand, but it's not functional, it's not the garage itself.
This particular system is not working.
Okay, so, I mean, we put another $2 million into this? I have parts of my neighborhood underwater. $2 million? I need, make vacuum trucks? I can't justify $2 million for lights. I'm E, 100%. My vote is E.
Well, the money for this would not come from the same source of money that we would use to, for stormwater infrastructure.
I understand, but it's still taxpayer money, and we might get it back from...
It's not taxpayer money, it's parking fund money.
Well, still, there's other things we could do with parking fund money other than lights.
And actually, one of them is right outside.
Right.
So we are obligated to build a garage in accordance with our lease with Parker Playhouse. We budgeted $7 million for a $30 million garage. I'm a CPA, that's 23 million short. So if you've got $2 million extra in the parking fund, it needs to go right outside to building that parking garage.
Well, there are other options that might be coming down the road with that garage right here, which is also in District 2. I still think that this is very short-sighted to just say, leave it up there looking crappy, and not give exactly what people expected when this garage was designed. It's not just a decorative feature of the garage, it's actually integral to the entire design of the garage. It's something that neighbors really appreciate. It's actually, when you think of it, there are many places in the United States where, when there are events, when there are holidays, I think we even did something when Russia invaded Ukraine, I think we flew the colors of Ukraine on that garage. People look at it as a community asset, they look at it as an expression of what our city is all about. It's really not as simple as people are making it out to be today. And again, it is the design that was approved by the commission, it's something that should have been looked at a lot more carefully. I don't know who was negotiating the agreement, I don't know who was negotiating the warranties and the guarantees. That was actually before, well, it was two commissions ago that did that. But I do believe that this should be operating the way it was designed, it's as simple as that. I think it's, you know, just really a poor way to go in saying, oh, it didn't work and we did a lousy job, so let it just look, continue to look lousy. I mean, that's not what a city like Fort Lauderdale does. We should be doing the right thing on this structure. It's a very important structure for not just the beach, but for the entire city. It really is almost a landmark. When the lights were working in the very beginning, it was something that people identified. It was almost like a wayfinding, and people really did look to it for a variety of reasons. I think it should be, I think it should be functioning the way it was designed, and I believe that it's not going to be taking away from some of the other issues we heard about today, flooding, or what we'll be doing with the garage in this location right here in Holiday Park. Those will all work out, and people will be stepping up and doing those things as well. But I think it's very short-sighted of us to just let this hang out there and look bad for the future. Thank you.
Is Elizabeth George still here?
Yes.
Hi, Elizabeth. You had signed up to speak, would you like to speak on this item?
I was going to say good afternoon, but I think it's now evening. So I'm Elizabeth George, I live at the Portofino on South Birch. Today, I'm here as the Vice President of Central Beach Alliance. I'd like to thank the mayor, the vice mayor, and the commissioners for allowing me the opportunity to share our feedback. When the garage was built and the lights were initially turned on, there were some mixed feelings. Everyone was happy to get more green space down by the waterfront with the parking lot being moved into the garage. However, there were some concerns regarding the lights. People wanted to make sure the lights were going to work, and they also wanted to make sure that they weren't going to be too bright, so that, I believe that the agreement was that they were shut off at 10 o'clock at night so that they would not bother the neighbors. A few actually made comments that it was like Vegas. Well, I don't think they've ever been to Vegas if they thought those lights were like Vegas. But most people did enjoy the creative lighting that occurred, especially during the holidays. Over the past many months, the lights have been horrible. You've seen these lights yourselves, so I don't need to go into the details. Those of us on the beach kept hoping that the lights would be repaired and returned to their splendor. When the commission identified the five possible options for moving forward, we decided to send this out to our membership and ask their feedback. I've supplied the copies to you, so you have all those details. The two highest votes were option D, purchase new lighting for non-working lights and upgrade the software, or option E to deactivate. One option that was not considered was to look at new technology that is simpler and effective in the caustic environment that we live in with the salt, sand, and wind. There are NEMA, National Electrical Manufacturers Association, and NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, standards that address those specifically. In fact, my husband and I, who are both electrical engineers, address the lighting that we have at Portofino so that it has been stable and we are able to keep our lights on all the time. I would like to point out a few of the comments that were made by some of our members. One was, take action against the original contractor and get more reliable systems. It is important to make sure that they're specified properly to ensure that reliable solution. Funding should come from the parking garage revenue, not taxpayer money. It was an excellent feature, not only for us that are locals, but also for all the visitors that come to the beach. We do agree that it's probably not needed to be on all sides of it with the blocking by the marina at the north side, but as was stated, that street is just as wide as the street between the buildings on the east side. And then there was one question brought up about compliance to turtle lighting as well. I would like to thank you for hearing our thoughts. We look forward to an effective solution that continues to beautify our beach area. Remember, that's why people come to Fort Lauderdale.
Great, thank you so much. Anyone else want to just speak on this item? There being none.
Mayor, I just want to add one more thing, because I've had another conversation with folks. Many people have always thought of this project, the lighting in particular as almost like a public art project. If we had a piece of public art in our city, and many public art projects are lighting, in fact, we're doing something like that right now under the Third Avenue Bridge, where that would be a total lighting project, I cannot imagine having a public art project, a public art lighting project, that if something went wrong and it just wasn't functioning anymore, that you would just leave it, that you would not correct the problem, and that you would not sustain the public art. That's all, thank you.
All right, I happen to agree with your approach and what the Central Beach Alliance has said. I think that it is a public art project. I believe that it was, the building of that parking garage was contingent upon it being wrapped in something decorative so that the community and visitors did not have to deal with the bare-faced image of just a concrete structure. That was an absolute necessity when that project was approved. So, I mean, I don't know whether, apparently, Commissioner Herbst is not in favor of doing anything, he wants, he wants number E, or letter E, to be his choice.
And I think, by the way, Mayor, that's consistent with the CBA members, if I'm looking at that, too. So the greatest number of responses was...
Well, but if you, but A, B, C, and D want to do something.
Right, but there's no consensus on, the only one that there's a consensus on is the E of do nothing.
Well, 52, but then there's like 70 that want to do something.
Of do something, yeah.
But if you also look at a lot of the comments, some of them are not understanding that this is not, that they don't understand that it's definitely coming from the parking funds. In other words, I'm not sure how much education was given before people were just given the five choices. And also, I think the Central Beach Alliance has thousands of people that live on the barrier island, and there are at least 500 to 600 members, I think, so...
Can we charge, Ben, to at least see if there's an alternative product, and so that is weather resistant? I mean, can we at least go there, and then we'll see, and then we can make a more intelligent decision? Because if there is another product out there that is weather resistant, that might be less money. So, I mean, I think that's almost to the vice mayor's point, like, let's first see what our options are.
Well, Mayor, I've got two thoughts about this. So the first is, I want to confirm something with the city manager here, because it's not consistent with what Commissioner Glassman said about there being funding available for Parker Playhouse. Because I've been in these conversations, because I sit on the PACA Finance Committee, and I get asked this every single month, and I know I've talked with Ben Rogers about this, and I've talked with the city manager, and every time I've had these conversations, I've been told that there's no funding available at this point in time for that project. So I've just heard something different, and I just want clarity on that. So if you could, Mr. Manager, do we have funding identified to complete that parking garage at the level that meets our lease obligations to PACA?
No, we do not. We still have a funding gap, we have potentials that, proposals of individuals that would like to partner to do this, but we haven't received anything firmly.
Okay, second thought, and, you know, maybe this is a compromise solution, is that we hold off on doing anything until such time as we do actually receive restitution from the folks involved in the deficient product. So let's hold off, let's see if we get the money, and then if you want to take that money and put it back into this project, you know, I'd be amenable to that, but I don't want to move forward on, you know, the prospect of litigation, because we all know that that's very uncertain, so...
And it's also very uncertain as to the timeliness of it. So why don't we, but John, why don't we at least see what other options there are in terms of product availability?
I just don't want to spend the money, Mayor, it's not product availability.
I'm not saying spend the money, just research it.
I have no problem with research.
Okay, so why don't we give you that responsibility of researching other products that would be available, and don't buy anything yet, all right? And then, and then we'll revisit the situation, okay?
Perfect, sounds great.
What's the timeline on that, Mayor? I'm just curious.
Well, I don't know how long it's going to take them to research.
I don't want to wait until the city attorney's off.
No, I mean, can you come back within 60 days?
Tonight, we're hiring the attorney, but I don't want to wait till that plays itself all the way out.
Let's come back in 60 days with some kind of report, all right?
Great.
After the holidays, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a recess now before, we have a 5:30 presentation, if you want to use the restroom, and then we have this, we have this presentation regarding Mayor Dressler.
Time's certain.
It's a time certain at 5:30. It's a time certain at 5:30.
One, two, check.
No, you're not.
Okay, thank God.
Okay. You don't look as bad as you think you do. Okay, so, the meeting will now resume, we're onto Presentation One. We're going to skip Business Three for a moment and, and jump to Presentation One. And, at this point, the Fort Lauderdale City Commission, upon the recommendation of the Citizens Committee of Recognition, acknowledges individuals every year whose efforts and achievements have contributed to the betterment of our city. The program began in 1972 with the purpose of publicly recognizing citizens who have contributed to our community in significant ways. The committee selects the honorees, and the committee's recommendations are then forwarded to the City Commission for approval. Since the inception of the program, we have celebrated 146 individuals. In the coming months, we will recognize one individual in each category, beginning this evening, with the 2022 Honored Founder, Robert A. Dressler. Mayor Dressler, do you hear me?
Yeah, barely.
Okay. Can you hear me better now? No. Okay. I'll, I'll keep talking, I'll keep talking, all right? So, I want to recognize the members of the Citizens Committee of Recognition. Start out with the Chair, Mayor Jack Seiler, Mayor Jim Noggle, Commissioner Romney Rogers, past Honoree Gina Ellis, past Honoree Betty Shelley, and Michael Albetta, who represents the Council of Civic Associations. I'd like to ask Mayor Seiler and Mayor Noggle if they want to add, have any comments that they'd like to add to this presentation. Mayor, Mayor Seiler?
I'm gonna let Mayor Noggle go first.
Oh, okay. Mayor Noggle will, will go first.
Hey, Rob, hey, they have a really fancy meeting, they have a really fancy...
Some technical problems.
Yeah, they have a really fancy meeting place now. It's in your district, it's right down the street from your house over here at the Parker. It's, it's a lot grander than we had in the days over at the City Hall.
I'm sorry, I have trouble hearing you.
All right, well, we, we really want to honor you tonight. We love you, and, just...
Yeah, I really appreciate it, I...
Just...
I thought I'd be able to just, you know, link up in the Zoom, but it doesn't seem to be working.
No. Well, we'll, I'm going to come over and say hi to you one of these days, but thank you for all your service and everything you've done for the city, and you really deserve this recognition tonight. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
All right, Rob, this is Jack Seiler, and I just want, on behalf of the Citizens Committee on Recognition, and I will tell you, you, you can't see us right now, but along with Mayor Trantallas to my left, you've got Commissioner Romney Rogers here, you've got Gina Ellis here, and Mayor Noggle, who you just spoke to. You also have the full City Commission up there with all the charter officers, and we're here to honor you tonight, Rob, really, for what you've done for this city through the years. So, just on behalf of the Citizens Committee, which Gina's holding up this, and she's going to get it over to you, but on behalf of the Citizens Committee, the proclamation closes with, now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, that Robert A. Dressler is hereby selected and honored as Honored Founder of the City of Fort Lauderdale in recognition of his many accomplishments and valuable contributions to the City of Fort Lauderdale, and that the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale hereby publicly recognizes and acknowledges these achievements, and does hereby express its heartfelt appreciation to Robert A. Dressler. Section Two, that a copy of this proclamation recognizing Robert A. Dressler as the Honored Founder shall be presented to him as a further token of the sincere gratitude and appreciation of the City of Fort Lauderdale, and it's going to be signed by Mayor Dean J. Trantallas here tonight. But, Rob, again, congratulations to you, but more importantly, thank you for what you've done for the city, thank you for what you've done for all the neighbors in the city, and God bless you. We're all praying for you and pulling for you, Rob.
Thank you. Now, can I make some comments? Can people hear me?
Yes, I just put you up to the microphone.
I'm on the microphone now?
Yes.
All right, well, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Committee Members, and Citizens, good evening. I'm sorry I can't be with you tonight, but I thought my daughter and granddaughter were going to represent me, and then we had an emergency with her dog, so, that didn't work. But first of all, I want to thank you for the honor. It's something I hadn't expected, but it's really appreciated. And I do have a few remarks I'd like to make to put it in perspective. When I was mayor during the early 1980s, I never expected to be named as a founder. However, a founder can be defined as a person who lays the foundation. So, in some ways, it's appropriate, because during my tenure as mayor, our community came together and laid the foundation to move from a spring break resort town to the beginnings of the honored city we know today. The City Commission, City Manager and Staff, Advisory Board members, six committees of citizens, and numerous local organizations, all worked together to develop a long-range plan for much-needed improvements in the city. And going beyond just ideas and planning, it was funded with a major bond issue that provided initial funding for many of the things we take for granted today. For example, the Riverwalk, redevelopment of the beach after we got rid of the excessive spring breaks, downtown redevelopment, park and neighborhood improvements, and numerous other projects that have improved our community over the years. Therefore, I would like to accept the Honored Founder Award, not just for myself, but all the citizens who were involved in the process for laying the new foundation for Fort Lauderdale at that time. So, thank you again for the honor.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone on the committee. It was a beautiful statement you made, and you certainly have laid the foundation upon which we are continuing to build this beautiful city. So, congratulations on this award, and thank you, Rob, for everything you've done for our community.
Thank you again.
All right, you take care, and we'll get this over to you, okay?
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
No, it's okay.
But I fully participate in your protest.
We understand, it was, it was the dog, we understand. You got a standing ovation, exactly. All right, take care.
Okay, thank you again.
Okay, bye-bye. Yeah, sure.
Guys, Happy Thanksgiving. Lauren, Happy Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving, guys. Vice President, Happy Thanksgiving. Even at that end of the podium, Happy Thanksgiving.
We're on to Business Three, update on City Hall relocation solutions. Ken, are you part of this?
So, so we're going to now talk about spacing, and this is a proposal of how we can accommodate a lot of the staff members that, right now, have been working remotely. We're at a point where, in order to improve performance and also accelerate delivery of projects, we need to have space, and Ken's going to let us know about that space.
Mr. Krasnow.
This is working? Yep. Good evening.
I just want you to know we're hungry, but go ahead.
I will be, I will, I will, I will be quick. So, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I am here, as Greg mentioned, to give you an update on the solution to put the staff back to work and get them situated properly. So, I don't know how to move this thing, but, I don't know, does that work? Did I do that? Okay. So, very quickly today, we're going to just go through the, the needs of, of staff and space needs. I am going to give you an update on the West Marine, the sub-sublease, current status, brief timeline of events, and then we're going to talk about some alternative relocation solutions compared to the West Marine... solutions compared to the West Marine and some options for chamber spaces. Okay, so this is just a quick summary of space pre, let's call it, before the flooding event. So as you can see there, within City Hall and Tower 101, and a small space that the City Attorney had in 1 East Broward, the city was occupying approximately 85,000 feet. There was a 3,500 square foot space in 1 East Broward that wasn't put on here, but... And as you note, the primary needs are to have chamber spaces for important meetings like this, office space for the staff, and for parking. So again, just kind of keep that number in mind in terms of square footage that the city was utilizing pre-flooding event, approximately 85,000 square feet. In, with regards, I'm going to give you a little update on the West Marine, the sub-sublease. So if you recall, back in the summer, back in June, we did an extensive research, survey of all downtown leasing options that we presented to the Commission that was on June 20th. On August 22nd, City Commission approved a sub-sublease between West Marine and the city for floors one and two, which is approximately 33,000 square feet. Again, just to kind of reorient everybody, West Marine is a sub-tenant of Kemett. Kemett holds the direct lease with the building ownership at 1 East Broward. That space for the floors one and two was what we call kind of that plug-and-play chamber option, chamber ready-to-go, and contiguous workspace needed for staff. All of the other options that we looked at in downtown at City Commission direction either required substantial build-out or did not have sufficient chamber space, and there was no cost for employees to park, which was adjacent to the current city garage. So this is a long timeline, but I'm just going to kind of run through it quickly.
Cut, can we cut to the chase? What is, what's on the agenda tonight?
What's on the agenda tonight is, because as you can see here, on October 27th, West Marine informed us that they were not able to facilitate a, effectively, a deal with their master tenant, and so they were not able to proceed with the agreement. So we are here to talk about an alternative space solution to get city employees back into the office in a functioning way. So when we were sensing that West Marine was kind of dying on the vine, we got some information that Tower 101 potentially was going to have some space from a current tenant that was going to release some of their spaces. So as you can see there, it's approximately 27,500 square feet on the 16th and top floor of the building. It would be available in February, although we actually think it's going to be available sooner in January. So kind of space ready-to-go, it was occupied by a former tenant built out in good condition. We then requested a proposal from Tower One for that space. We also looked at some options for potential divisions, IT specifically, in the Uptown region. And if you remember, 1901 West Cypress was one of the other buildings that we were considering for the police from the Kaplan. So now we are effectively here giving you, and tonight it'll be on the agenda, to approve a 54-month lease at Tower 101, which will take you through July of 2028, and a 36-month lease uptown at 1901 West Cypress for the IT department of approximately 9,378 square feet.
Are we currently occupying space in 101?
We are.
Commissioner Herbst, is that where you, aren't you still there?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay.
I think the auditor and the attorney are all there, too.
We have the entire 14th floor at this point, which we've had for as long as I can remember.
Right. Okay. And 54 months is, they want four and a half years, four years, four and a half years of rent, a lease?
Yep.
Isn't that a little much?
It's, it, you know, the issue we ran into with Kemett and West Marine was kind of a consolidation of a lot of space within a building for one particular tenant and how it lined up with other lease expirations that they had rolling at the same time. So this was an accommodation for the fact that we didn't want to have a longer-term lease, but this was the amount of term that fit within other lease obligations, because we are, as you can see now, we are going to have, you know, approximately 50,000 square feet in Tower 101, and there was too much concentration of risk with other tenants if our lease was shorter duration. So 54 months was the shortest period of time that we could accommodate at that building.
Wow. Okay. And 36 months at 1901 West Cypress?
Correct.
Okay, well, that's a no-brainer. So... And IT is okay with that, City Manager?
Yes, they do a lot of work that requires collaboration and doesn't need to be with other staff members.
Okay. So, and so the balance of the space needed in order to accommodate the rest of our city staff can be accommodated in the Tower 101 proposal?
We are, we're looking at expanding into it. The right ways of doing a study and then determining the amount, but this at least would get a majority of the staff members that are working from home, specifically public works. That's one department that we really need to get that space, because they're doing a lot of critical infrastructure projects, want to make sure they have ample space to operate.
Okay, and this puts them, and this puts them close to existing operations that we already have.
Correct. That would allow us to meet frequently, talk to budget, procurement, Attorney's Office, dialogue, meet with the public, be centric to many parts of the city.
Okay. All right.
And just for clarification purposes, the sub-sublease that was approved back in June with West, in August, with West Marine was a 64-month term. So again, we heard the concerns about length of term, but again, the concentration of the amount of space that we would now occupy in Tower 101 compared with all the other tenants that they have in that building, 54 months was the shortest duration we could achieve.
Also, would like to add that we are looking at having our meeting space at the NSU Museum for the public meetings.
So just, so when is that going to start?
We're looking at potentially starting in January.
Okay. All right, we all good on this? Okay.
Wait, wait, wait. This is...
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
No, I mean, this is...
So, I'm sorry, this was Greg, I think, had mentioned in terms of chambers and meeting space for advisory boards. So we're looking at the NSU Art Museum, a 256-seat facility, and the Marine Industries Association, second floor, which would accommodate 150 people.
Yeah, but there's no parking there. There's no parking at the Marine Industries Association building, right?
Right, it's limited.
So that would be completely inappropriate. And so at least the NSU Art Museum, we have our own parking garage right there. Right, okay.
Right. So these were the two options. And again, so where was I? The options, I guess, basically before you are, we have the leases, because we, as Commissioner Herbst mentioned, we've been in Tower 101 for a long time. We have a lease, we're ready to go. The space is in great shape, ready to go. So the leases for both Tower 101 and 1901 are both approved and effectively ready for execution. So again, that provides kind of immediate relief. As Greg said, the majority of city staff would be able to, you know, sort of come back together to work. And then option two is we sort of start, you know, all over again.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Sturman, you had a comment?
I mean, when we were originally looking for space, this is when we had to get out of City Hall, we did a whole search, gave us a whole network, a whole matrix of choices to look at. We were uptown, downtown, compared a few, and then, same thing, when we went through City Hall, we, you know, had a couple, you know, we presented this at conference, we discussed it a little bit, and it was 1.4 million for police. Now we're talking 8.6 million. I mean, this is a lot of money. I know the one 1901 is a lot less. I mean, there's a voting item on this tonight, correct, Greg?
Yes, there is one.
Boom, you throw this on us and give us a voting item, not even present it in conference to look at it and see what the options are. I think, you know, 8.6 mil, I think we need a...
It's over five, four and a half, it's over four and a half years.
I realize, but it's over, but the price per year is more than we're paying for the police headquarters, and we beat that to death just going from seven to 1.4 or something. This is a lot of money.
Yeah, but this is also going to be partially reimbursable by FEMA.
And there is a very big disparity rental-weight-wise between downtown and uptown. And again, back in the summer, when we were going through those various options, it was directed that downtown would be the option for the City Hall staff, who would be, the majority of City Hall staff, who would be, you know, disrupted by the flood.
Looking at yearly basis, it's 260 a year K, but versus 1.9 million a year, a year, that, I mean, do we need that many people downtown?
We do. I will tell you that we had a lot of impact with our performance, with our ability to deliver on time, and the staff has requested space, and we're in dire need of space. We feel that being in downtown allows us to be centric to the people that come and visit us, from contractors to neighbors, and it also allows us to quickly, promptly visit site locations, and being centric in downtown also allows us to be available for other agencies that we work with closely, like the county and other agency partners as well.
Well, I remember last time, we needed a contract, and it took several weeks, like two meetings to get legal on board to do the contract. How long...
It's already done, they said.
I know, that's my point. How long have you known about this, that you were going to be bringing this forward?
We actually had this ready since last meeting, but this is carried over because we could not consider this last meeting.
Okay, because I would have liked this to be presented to us. We'd talk about this and then give you, okay, I mean, we have a contract now, without us even talking about it.
Wait, but wait a second. Didn't I see all this information on the last agenda, and we just deferred it all?
Correct. It was on the last...
We had, we've had this for a month, Warren.
So you read it on the last...
You should have read it for the last meeting. I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, any further comments? Okay.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
In regards to the chambers, NSU or Marine Industries, what is the cost for use of those facilities for our commission meetings?
For NSU, there's a small nominal fee for cleaning, janitorial, correct?
And security.
And security. So those are minimal costs compared to what we pay here today, and they also agreed to allow us to keep our equipment there permanently, which helps the setup and breakdown. We wouldn't have to do that. We do that today, here, and at the other site that we temporarily meet.
And Marine Industries?
I don't have those figures.
Hi, Angela Salmon, City Manager's Office, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. We haven't had those discussions with Marine Industries Association, but currently we host some of our board meetings there, and I believe that we leave our equipment there for those meetings right now.
But was there a charge for the use of the space?
No.
There's no charge?
No.
Okay. But there is no parking there, that's the problem, Vice Mayor. Yeah. All righty. Thank you. All right, it's five after six, folks. The only thing left on the afternoon agenda is these City Commission reports, which I'm hopeful we can just do after our evening meeting. We also have a CRA meeting. May I suggest we break for 30 minutes and then begin the evening meeting at 6:35?
Well, here's a thought. Could we postpone the rest of the conference, go through the CRA real quick? I mean, how long is CRA going to take?
The CRA, I don't, there's some...
I think that may take a while.
Yes, to your first point.
The first point was to postpone this till after the meeting.
Yeah, I said we'll postpone the Commission report till after the evening meeting, but I'm trying to think as, I guess there's nothing really controversial here, so, I mean, we can do the CRA meeting. I don't want to keep people away. What's that? Take a break?
Take the break. And then, because there's some things on the CRA that I know I have some conversation about.
And I do as well, Mayor, so...
Okay, I thought so, too. So...
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so we will, we will continue the conference meeting till after the evening meeting, and we'll take a 30-minute break. Thank you.